Could I just maybe point out before this, like, just maybe where we're at, just?
Tell me, I'll continue. That's how the motion of what the meeting?
We'll be open the meeting, February eighteenth, two thousand fifteen.
Second. closing period. So now, Mr. Open the meeting. Now, it's continued public hearing for fifty six Newbury Port Turnpike, my savory is a property owner. And Tom, you're the here tonight as for Clearwater Environmental, right?
Yes, so here for Liz.
All right, Kirk has a couple comments.
Yeah, I was just gonna point out, just to make it clear where we're picking up. And if you guys remember back in December, Larry and I met with Mr. Ryder in regards to Larry's previous comment from December. And it was agreed at that time that they would actually rotate that building from, from, so that it's parallel to, to Route One. So they've revised the plans according to all the things that they discussed, that we discussed at that meeting. And that's what this plan is. And so they did a supplemental about a couple of weeks ago. And Larry and the others have reviewed it. Larry had some additional comments based on the new configuration. Concom had some comments. Fire Department, Police Department, Health Department have all approved. So just put that out of the way. So we agree with some additional comments.
And at this time, Fire Department, Police Department do not have any?
No worries.
And then I received today, we have just three comments from the consternation commission.
And also there was the also the, the other issue of the, of the additional uses that, or storage uses that were going on that were kind of revealed by, as a result of this application. And we had asked, the board had asked Mr. Savery to submit documentation. He had previously submitted documentation in which he said that there are several existing landscape contractor uses in which they, they're really just storing vehicles and some equipment on the site at the top of the hill, out of sight. And, but the planning board asked for some confirmation that, that these uses would be, that these uses would be allowed if they were grandfathered in, which we were asking for documentation that, that they were, that they were pre-existing uses. And there's been some documentation in the form of, of email messages from a couple of the, the contractors who are stor, who are storing equipment there. And, but it looks like they're, that they've attested that they've been there since nineteen ninety-six and the other from, since two thousand.
Well, that's not a pre-existing use, huh?
Yeah, that's, I was gonna point out. So as of right now, though, we still haven't received any real documentation that actually shows that those uses. So the board will need to, like, discuss that as a part of this.
All right. You wanna go through some, you wanna go through some of Larry's stuff, or do you wanna just?
I'll just pick up where we left off before, so we, so we met.
All right, you have the floor. Just announce who you are.
Sorry, Tom Ryder, work for Clearwater and Mark. So any last, where we picked up before was that we were gonna be, that I was gonna meet with Larry and Kirk, which we did in December. And we discussed the hydrology and the building location and a few other comments that Larry had. So what we, what I suggested is that we relocate the building to the, to position to be parallel with Newbury Port Turnpike and cut off this access drive and re-vegetate. And then on this side, to have it paved.
What, the north pond side?
Yes. Larry wanted to have us change the infiltration system to chambers, which, which I prefer anyways. So that's what we, we did, and we did the methodology to show that it works. We gotta do substantial, some recreating the property here to make it all work, 'cause we have a septic system design. I had relocate the septic system, the proposed septic system. And, and showed some existing structures that were missing from the last plan. So that is pretty much a summary of the changes, including the old paved section that we're proposing. So just received Larry's comments, I spoke with him on the phone. Indicated there were some changes. He didn't, he thought they could either be done during, you know, through a, you know, through, through the decision or through a, just a revision of the plans. Seems pretty easy enough. He, he was suggesting, one thing we talked about, his little rain garden here, to show, that will receive flow from the pavement and where they capture that. Pavement runoff into the little swale, which will eventually discharge to a catch basin down below. Whatever doesn't get infiltrated down, it'll discharge over here like it normally does anyways. He was suggesting that just change this to a rip wrap and maintain that little rain garden that I have up over here, which will receive the overflow from the roof drainage.
Yep. So are you going to revise the plan to?
So, yeah, so I, I did, you know, I did accept that if, if he wants just like a rip wrap instead, that, that's fine with me. And all the water continues going in this direction.
Okay, how's that his recommendation, that the arborvitae screen go across the full length of the zone?
I, I do agree with, to a point, I just wanna, I didn't wanna show it going over the utility. So I, you know, that's kind of a pet peeve of mine, too, where, you know, landscapers and engineers don't get together and, and, you know, and put the, you know, the planting where the utilities are going. So, yes, I will show some water, just so we can avoid the water.
Are they, are they proposing the arborvitae?
I was gonna, I told them not to put arborvitae on. I said, don't, don't, I asked Liz not to put arborvitae on the plan.
Okay, so what do you want to say?
The deer victims are not really.
No, arborvitae is.
Yeah, so I don't have a problem with that.
I actually, I left it as the, as the arborvitae, you know, the astronaut, too.
I ain't Pacifico out front, haven't been eaten yet, I don't know.
No, the deer don't eat Pacifico, they do eat arborvitae.
Yeah, so I could put Pacifico there.
So I was thinking we could.
That's not screening, that's not screening.
No, I mean, you've got a, plus, you know, what you're, what you're showing is, is not a very natural looking landscaping plan. It's just a line of, of, I don't know, whatever you decide to put there.
Yeah.
You have room, seems to me, to put in a more, you know, natural and robust looking landscaping plan.
I think it's kind of close to the, to the hill, though, the way Larry had him put the building. It's sort of close to the slope.
Well, I guess I'd like to.
How much space is there?
It wasn't very much.
I guess I, I guess I would like to, and I said this before, I think others have said it, too, that we wanna do a site visit.
Yeah.
To actually look at, look at the property and see, you know, what would make the most sense.
We can revise the land. I mean, the mullers in the burb in the back of the building did kind of a, it wasn't a straight line, they did some depth.
Well, it should be staggered, right?
Yeah, they did, they did some depth in their plantings there. And a lot of it's white pine, something is one of them.
Should be okay.
And if there's some sun, you got some there, right?
It's not expensive.
You got plenty of sun.
Yeah, yeah, the sun there, yeah.
And it's pretty, there's, as long as they don't dry out in the beginning. But this was to screen the neighbors from the back of the building, the demullers, it seems to have worked out okay. So far.
Yeah, so in other words, I think you should, you should do a more natural looking landscaping plan rather than just a line of whatever.
Stagger them a little bit.
Yeah, and, you know.
Depending on.
'Cause you got the room for it, and I think it would enhance the property.
The Fire Department, Water, Water Department, Fire Department somebody already come in.
Yeah.
Water Department, no?
Water Department hasn't come in. But that, that was where you have to file an hour.
Yeah, they weren't. I left messages there.
It was a small office.
See, Larry's kind of narrowed it down quite a bit in this, as you see. In terms of being more amenable to the drainage, rain garden idea. Restoring the gravel on the right side, which is in the other one.
So are you suggesting?
And then limiting, getting, getting some, make sure the lighting is limited, so it doesn't.
Yeah, I think it was a light plan, right?
Yeah.
It said the plans are vague with respect to lighting, except for one note on sheet three. I would recommend that any approval action by the board limit proposed lighting to the westerly log side of the building. The wall, the wall building mounted wall packs in compliance with the lighting by law. So you're gonna be having signage? Would you signage on the building? Gone through enough so far.
Yeah, today I'm just, some problems in the land. I got a sewer pipe that clogged sixty-five feet down, and now this snake snapped off in there, and it's like, it's just a nightmare.
That's great.
Snow, how do you dig in a sewer hole, sewer pipe in this town, yeah.
Yep, just one thing, that's true. The plan shows a proposed water service from Route One into the northeast corner of the building. We assume this is new domestic service only, not fire sprinkler?
Correct.
For facilities in the building? Is it already attached to Route One, or what?
Yeah, well, I really wanted to do a well, but I think that there's a rule in the planning board that says I have to have town water. I don't know if I understood that.
I don't think so.
'Cause I'd really wanna do a well, because there's tons of water there.
I don't know, I don't know if that's ever come up.
Get the, Kirk check on that one, I don't know of any.
I read one somewhere, that's a baby's boot. 'Cause I wanted to.
That may have to do with the sprinkler system.
Is it any new development or something? Unless they're meant to house the ball, I don't know.
Was that Concom?
It's like a subdivision.
Oh, maybe that's it.
For, so, I guess it, it's not a, the site plan, it's under.
All right, we'll look into that, that's not, you're not, you're not digging any wells right now.
Digging snow.
Any approval action by the board should be made subject to Mass Department of Transportation approval for the change in use to the existing curb cut.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, we're not.
And if required, road open permit for the water service.
Right. What's a DOT thing all about?
So if we're construct, if we're, if we're occupying or excavating within the right of way?
Oh, I see.
They need a permit.
I get it.
Larry would recommend final plan revisions be considered in response to above comments, as well as any comments the planning board other town departments may have. I would also recommend a thorough and careful decision be drafted to identify some of the existing site concerns and comments noted herein. Initial draft of that decision might be appropriate for the parties to review sooner than later. 'Cause I think that they have to deal with some of the issues of pre-existing uses on the property.
So people like Cliff deciding, I don't know, people aren't supposed to be there, you mean?
I don't know, I mean.
No, just in terms of get some, you're gonna get some documentation, whether you have lease agreements or what kind.
I don't have leases, anybody, it's a handshake, but I am getting, did you get the last email, Kurt, today?
Yeah, I got, I got.
I only have three, I only have three so far.
Well, I didn't get a third one.
Because they emailed it to Liz, and she was, and forwarded to you.
'Cause we would, we would have to look at that, where Kirk can also conjunction with the building inspector as well.
I mean, I think otherwise what.
I mean, it's just people really storing a couple trucks or whatever, but I, I did. I do have a third one in my drawer, that's what I sent to.
That these are somehow grandfathered in, and then we can always pursue a site plan review for those.
Sure, 'cause there's like, there's no offices, there's no electricity, there's no water, there's no customers. It's basically, it's.
Can we encompass it in this?
Body of truck there.
Can we encompass it in this?
This has already been advertised for specific, you're adding uses that were. I don't know if it'd be safe to.
Yeah, let us look into that, all right? We'll have time before the next meeting. I wanna talk to the building inspector and just get proper advice on that.
Well, are we all in agreement that we should do a site plan, a site visit? And that's, that's not gonna happen anytime soon, I would.
That's the trouble, I mean, I didn't expect, when we were talking about this before, there was no snow in the ground.
There is snow everywhere.
There's trucks everywhere, it sounds like six feet.
But I kind of wanna hurry up here, at least get close to an approval, I have everything I'm supposed to do.
We're pretty, I know, we're closer to this, we have a question on the pre-existing uses, whether we have to get site plan.
We have to look at the site, I don't think, anytime soon.
Yeah. Well, you guys can go up there, I can bring you up in full.
But I mean, based on the information we have, it doesn't mean Kirk can't start with Larry drafting something, so we're not waiting for that. Drafting the permit, but it's gonna take some time to, to see the sites, so.
Isn't much I can do anyway, as well, there's snow anyways, right?
No, but this has been a long process, it seemed like it might go on for three months.
No, no, I know. Larry, this is, this is a substantial.
I don't have my information all the time, I should have.
Larry's decision is substantial, Larry changes. This is quite a bit. When you say this is narrowed down.
Yes, yes, it's, it's all for him, too, so. Did you say you wanted white pine, is that, is that what?
Well, you need to. I'll tell ya, I planted white pine on the side, and I dug them from up back. And those things are just so tough. They take snow every year, and every year they survive.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think they're acceptable, yeah.
Really tough, but.
I dug them on. The ground, the spindly ones, I mean, it's.
Just tag them down with a bucket.
At a certain, at a certain height.
It came on same piece of property.
They still should be landscaped plants.
I mean, normally we get six or seven foot white pines, not, you're not talking about things that were that high.
No, these were pretty, these are high, these are high if not tall.
This has to be shown on your site plan. I mean, the, the spacing, the, the species, and the size of the tree, all has to be shown on the landscaping plan.
I would like, yeah, see if you can do something that has some, you know, varying, varying depths to it.
Yep, yep.
We have a landscape architect in the audience.
Yep, it's my next door neighbor, my neighbor.
Hey.
Two of them, actually.
Well, we actually have a requirement that you get a landscape architect to do the landscaping plan, but I think we're willing to relax that, if you come up with, present us with a good plan.
You got, you got the right start. And that can be, I don't know, how do we wanna approach that in terms of just notes on the plan? Take arborvitae off when they have, and just put a box with the plantings? 'Cause these are kind of generic, you might wanna redraw it or?
Yeah, I mean, I have a couple of changes suggested, suggestions.
Okay, let's do that. All right, read Larry's comments. Make sure you get everything on the plan, so we're not still screwing around with changes on the plan.
In regards to the question about the water connection, there's a, under site plan two point six, all utilities shall be underground, all, all projects shall be served by the town's water supply.
Oh.
There is a direct requirement for connecting to water.
For site, this is for site plan, special part?
This is under site plan review. Rules and regulations governing.
See, that's kind of, that's kind of weird, and I'm like, well, okay, what if somebody gets poisoned from town water? Does that mean that I have a, I could do a well? That's some pointy stupid stuff, I just wanted a well, 'cause it was easier, obviously, in the long run, more affordable. The water's probably better. Every time I turn my Raleigh water, I don't drink anymore.
Well, you're a business owner, and so, I mean, you can have water supply, some people have both, you know.
Right.
Doesn't Cochran have wells down there? In Forest Ridge?
Partly.
Is that just for the?
Well, no, let's not go.
Listen to the landscaping, to the watering.
So the question is the schedule, we don't have a calendar here anymore.
Whoa.
Pull yours out, I didn't, I didn't bring mine, is anybody up?
I was gonna actually suggest March eleventh, which is the, or you wanna meet earlier on this, so we, okay.
What do you think we can viable do as site planners? Yes, me? I mean, tonight, you know, you know your site.
Well, there's nobody knowing how long it's gonna take for to get rid of most of that snow.
You can drive up there, it's not really an issue. I should've met you in December, but I just had to go to the auctions. It's a good thing I did, I sold all my Lotus, everything in the front bucket, just about. Thank God.
The eleventh is what, is, is two weeks from now, right?
Next week is the twenty-fifth.
Three weeks from now.
And, yeah, the fourth, and then the eleventh. Of course, that's after daylight savings.
You were trying to meet second, first, first and thirds, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, I was trying to meet, yeah, the second and fourth.
Is the third, what's the third in March, third?
March, March, well, that would be March fourth, that would.
Hell, the third.
Well, the third is a Tuesday.
Hell, the third, um.
Oh, the third, oh, sorry.
Eighteenth.
Eight, eighteenth, yeah.
Let's do it, then.
Okay.
They're not calling for the second and fourth any longer?
This will be, this is the third.
What's the last?
I mean, you can, I mean, I, it's just that.
What's the fourth, what's the fourth one?
The fourth twenty is the twenty-fifth.
Will you be there, then?
No.
It's been nice to retire, Charlie.
Was something wrong with March eleventh, or?
Probably okay, I'm not sure.
Was there a reason that we didn't consider?
So the next eighteenth, and so the next two and nine.
I'm gonna be gone for three weeks, so, you know.
Wow, must be tough.
Thought you could do it without me, you know, I don't have to be there.
With the site visit?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you guys wanna do it while I'm gone, that's fine.
Is this for the site visit, or?
Oh, that's what I thought was.
No, I think we should.
Oh, yeah, if we're gonna do a site visit, I would suggest.
Well, we'll try to do, okay, we're gonna try to meet, okay? Wrap up this end of things, okay, and next meeting, then we'll set the site visit, 'cause we'll have a better assessment. Okay, I don't wanna set, set it tonight, it's too many unknowns, all right? So we'll set the next meeting for the eleventh, 'cause Cliff will be here.
Now, what's required of, like me?
I know he's got.
No, he's got, he's just gonna revise some plans with landscaping, some of the comments that Larry had. Let's, let me look to see if I can specifically.
How long would it take, you think it would take to do a revision, you got it, Larry, you give them enough time, so?
Three weeks, again, not three.
Uh, we could do this probably Monday.
You mean, you'd have something by Monday?
Yeah.
Or you'd revise it by?
Yeah, I can, yeah.
Okay.
These, these changes won't take too long.
No, I'm just looking at, some of them have to do with the building, and notes on the plans, really. And West number five, for example, I suggest the plan's be revised to show the pavement in. So there, there might be a change. All right, so we'll meet on the eleventh, all right? We'll continue this on seven thirty and the eleventh, then we can get some, he can have a chance to maybe start drawing something up for the permit, so that you can see it.
I mean, why have to do, what about the use thing, am I supposed to do something about, do you get letters from people?
Yeah, that's an issue.
I only wanted to point that out, if, if, 'cause it says like site plan review of those uses. If, if they can't show documentation, then there's the option of doing a site plan review of those uses separate from this.
If that's what Mark wants to do, I mean, he's gotta decide what.
Alls I know is I went to Ken, actually, you were there, with a list of the, of what's being done there, which is basically storage trucks, and he made, it's an allowed usage, even with today's rules, and I know there's supposed to be.
Well, no, those contractor storage uses require site plan review.
But I'm just saying, it's not like a retail store.
No, but they still require a site plan review, it'd be formal to be.
But I don't know if they needed a site plan review back when they were started, I gotta look in.
Maybe not, but if you can't show they were.
I don't know when they started, when they started, whatever year they.
It sounds like the guys that did comment said that they all began their occupancy back in ninety-six and ninety-seven, which does not predate the.
Site plan review.
So, so those aren't grandfathered uses, and for that reason, we would want to look at it again, all right? But, you know, I think you mentioned at one point that there were some guys that might've been there for as many as forty years. And if that's the case.
They're not there all the time, my father's in Florida, and he don't, he doesn't want nothing to do with it right now.
Well, we know, too, that actually there's a late site plan review, so it's good to go and just assume that there's gonna be a separate site plan review for that, for those uses. It can be separate, I think, from this application. I think that's actually probably why, it's because we've already done a public hearing, and it's already been advertised as a, as a five thousand square foot building without reference to these other storage uses. So you kind of have to go back through the process again for those.
I mean, I, I think part of, you know, this process is, you know, part of it's accomplishing some improvement, it's like.
I mean, one thing is, you gotta figure, all the years I've been there, have there ever, ever been a complaint? There hasn't. Figured it's like no one's there, it's like not bothering anybody, and I know it's kind of being allowed usage or whatever.
Well, to say that, I mean, your butters aren't the type that are gonna complain, you have other commercial uses, but, but it is. It is a, it's got high visibility in the town, and the first thing that people see when they drive into Raleigh up Route One is the site, and, and right now, it's, it's, you know, despite the fact that obviously there's a going concern and it's a business, it's fallen in this disrepair, and it's, and some of the improvements have been made in a, sort of a haphazard way. I mean, we'd like to see the, the site brought up to a more modern standard.
Some resemblance of the zoning, a little neater anyways.
Yeah, and I, I think that's, and, you know, that's where we get into counting the number of stored vehicles on the site, I mean, I, you know, I went up there once and then formally counted, I mean, I stopped at a hundred, and I think that there's considerably more than that, you know, and yet, I don't think that, well, I mean, I don't know what you count, a vehicle, they're not all trucks, they're not, but I mean, there's all kinds of equipment up there, and, and the site, the current permit doesn't really, I think it's capped at some number, and I think you exceed it. So we're trying to bring the use in, in compliance with the, the permit. So that's, you know. I think, you know, we have to know what's up the hill before we make any decision on this. I mean, I think that we have to at least take a look, I, you know, get an idea, a better idea of what's up there before we, we decide anything.
Now, no, until I see it, I'm not gonna draw a conclusion, Kirk is just saying what could potentially happen. We're not saying it's gonna happen until we take a look. But we'll set that next meeting, all right? Not a big deal, I think we've made progress, and we'll start off, Kirk's starting to write this up in conjunction. You guys have been communicating, and appreciate the efforts you've done so far. No, any progress?
Now, should I keep getting letters from these people, like you wanted, or that doesn't matter now?
Well, if you can get any documentation that will help us.
That I can show Kenny, just to.
So we'll at least know what's there, what to expect.
Yeah, well, I gave a whole list in the beginning, but now I'm getting signed documentation.
Yeah, if you can get that, I think that would be more helpful or not.
Yeah, and I'll be discussing that before next meeting with the building inspector, with Kirk, just to have a better idea of which direction to go.
Yep.
Appreciate it, I'm just gonna, and, all right, thanks.
Yep, thanks, guys. If you can get any contact information with.
Yeah, Dave left his number.
Mr. Hurley? And you left Kirk's. And before you crunch out a bunch, ask how many, okay, so you don't do more than you have to.
Yeah.
With the piece submitting, especially to other departments, some of them will just take, you know, like emails. Just to try to save mine. Thanks for coming down.
Good, thank you.
All right, this is, and that's gonna be the eleventh at seven thirty, all right? Is there anything else at seven thirty? Kirk, is that all right? All right, Steve, this is, and Chris, as we know, this is, the people read in the packet was the application for simply the sign on the building, that, as we can see, that building's been pretty much built. And this is, we voted last meeting to allow him to come in and just get the special permit after going to ZVA for the variance in the size of it, that's it, so. 'Cause all we had done when we did the initial special permit was to approve, illuminated post, sign on the post.
Right.
Which looks good.
Thanks.
That looks good.
Yeah.
Thanks, good visibility, it looks great. We really don't have a design review advisor, but it's kind of like a little... Our design person, David, is out here, but... So, you wanna, I think we're close to the, did you get any adverse comments on it?
No, no, um, it's only, the only thing I would just point out, uh, that, you know, previously he had gotten the ZBA approval for the, for the dimensional and the height aspect, so he's allowed to do a 45-square-foot, uh, sign, and then, uh, which is, uh, 25 feet above the ground, so then...
Yeah, it's a raceway-mounted channel letter sign, approximately 45 square feet, 33 inches by 180 inches, and located slightly above the second floor windows.
Is it, um, uh, is this shown in scales, so that's where it's gonna look like?
It is.
It is, yeah.
And if you look in your packets, did you see what Cliff had there, and Steve? That's what it looks like, Steve?
Yeah, I think I got one here, go ahead.
And Chris? Does she have any comments?
In artistic, that's, um, the lighting is a little bit different, what is, what's that?
Oh, I think that's just the copy.
Hot?
It's all the same.
Oh, really? It's all white?
Oh, okay, all right.
Can I see it in the picture? Looks like this in color.
And it's an internally emit LED, uh, light and...
Here, Chris.
Just showed it, yeah.
That's LED. White faces with burgundy trim cap and returns, um... The amount of lumens, it's not, not that bright, so it's...
No.
Yeah, as far as...
Plus the building setback.
As far as the, uh, I talked to the sign contractor about the, the lum, um, the luminance levels, he, he does comply with the, section 8.6.5.8 for internally, where it says, internally, the lighted signs shall not exceed the following average levels of illuminance. He's going by the average commercial environment, which is 80 candleers per square, or per foot. And that's what it does, that particular sign is designed, um, in terms of its luminance.
You're gonna have to draw up the special permits.
Yeah.
Sorry, next, the sign next to you.
Well, the, um, I probably, I have, uh, the one...
That's from January 14th.
Yeah, it says January 14th, I should have changed that.
What I thought, I looked at...
But I can change that, um...
So, that was your...
Let's say it's written...
Everybody have that?
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 that's your, I, I, I can just give it back.
That's what I thought, I mean, that's, why isn't it... Did you read that?
Yeah.
It looks okay to me, except, uh, your, your, your light on comments, as usual, comments, right?
Oh, I need more comments.
After as proposed.
Well, let's go through that one. All right, does everybody have that in front?
Yeah.
Uh, this, I'm kinda...
Yeah, this is advertised.
Advertised for tonight, there's a...
Where's my thing going?
Oh, it should, I have to end both of those, too, right?
It's gonna take off.
No, I'll have it. All right.
Confusing, this is your second sign.
Exactly.
Sorry, all right, we'll back up a bit. Yeah, because he was here for the other one, uh, this was advertised for two straight weeks, Wednesday, February 4th, February 11th. Yeah, so this is, uh, a public hearing for a special permit by Tony Hurley Artistic Landscapes for a back illuminated sign. And the public hearing notice reads as follows, in accordance with NAS general laws, chapter 40A, the Raleigh Protective Zoning Bill on the Raleigh Planning Board Rules and Regulations. The Raleigh Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, February 18th, 2015, at 8:00 PM. The town will let it be noted that it was, started at, what, 8:20? Relative applications for a special permit under, oh, sorry, uh, in the Town Hall Annex, I'll, I'll go back. Will conduct the public hearing Wednesday, February 18th, 8:00 PM, Town Hall Annex Public Conference Room Number 5, located at 39 Central Street, Raleigh, Mass., relative to applications for a special permit under section 8.6, sign elimination. The applicant owner is Tony Hurley, Artistic Landscapes LLC, 1 Sawmill Way, Georgetown, Mass., 01833. The special permit is required for a proposed eliminated wall-mounted sign in existing commercial building located on 111 New Report Turnpike, Raleigh, Mass., shown in accessories map 14 lot 17, the applications planned to be documents are on file with the Raleigh Planning Board, available for public inspection at the Raleigh Planning Board Office during public office hours. Kirk is Brian, chairman, I have a motion to open the hearing.
I move to open the hearing for the, uh, Artistic Landscape for 111.
Please have a second.
January 4th, turn right second.
Second by Steve, has the other second. Hearing's open, um... Kirk has a, um, as was mentioned, uh, or mentioned again, uh, Mr. Hurley, or do you have anything to say?
I think, um, I have, I'm Tony Hurley, and the sign is designed to make sure that we meet all the bylaws, um, on 8.6.4, et cetera, Annex 8.6.5, um, and I've detailed out that we've checked everything with the sign company to make sure that we're not coming up on any of the bylaws.
Yeah, you previously, you previously, uh, went to the zoning board of appeals, received an affirmative...
An affirmative for the size of the sign and the, uh, location, being about 25 feet off the, off the ground.
Okay.
Above the second floor windows.
And the, the members received a copy of that?
Of the, uh, I actually...
Notification, when was that approved?
I, it was, um, the approval was on... This, uh, December 18th, 2014.
Okay, so that was your, your vote on that?
Yeah.
And that basically allowed a, uh, a variance in the size? That, that allowed a variance, you remember, in the square footage of the sign, and also the height, right?
I mean, I, I wasn't involved with the project from the beginning, but, I mean, it's a beautiful building, and it's huge. And, uh, and I can't believe you're not gonna put nothing in it.
We're still, we're putting more sheetrock in tomorrow.
Well, I, I mean, it, it's, no, no, no daily deliveries expected, I mean, why would you build a building that big if nothing's going in it?
I'm keeping my equipment and people in there, so...
As far as daily you put down there, but that also encompasses what kind of traffic on a weekly basis? Just because when I picked that up in your application, it said no daily deliveries, but the question also asked, you know?
Very, very approved of the building.
That's what I'm saying, that's a special permit application for all special permits, not just for signs.
We're just talking about the sign, huh?
No, I, I mean, you know, I got, I was just wondering...
Okay, um...
I mean, I was concerned about the size of the sign, but, uh, in the abstract, when I heard about the ZBA granting the variance, but, in, considering the scale of the building, it looked, it looks pretty good.
I think it gives a good visibility on the one. I think it's, it's very tasteful, and I think, I think it matches well with the other sign, the freestanding sign.
Thank you.
If you look at, Kirk already, um, wrote up the special permit, um, great having a planner. So that, and, and can you just tell him some revisions on the comments?
Uh, just one comma, Kirk, is not bad, in the second line of the, of the second paragraph. The illuminated sign, comma, as proposed, comma, so you're missing the comma after as, as proposed. The only other thing I would add is that on the paragraph, or bullet one, where you're talking about the sign shall conform with the dimensional specifications, et cetera, et cetera. It wouldn't be a bad idea to just put what those, uh, those specifications are, in other words, at the end, you could put, you know, size not to exceed 33 inches by 180 inches.
Okay.
Yeah, so it just, um, cites the actual plan.
Okay.
The sign plan.
Those are the going comments of the hearing.
And so, uh, any board members, can you have a chance to, any comments on this special thing? It's basically to make sure it's just in compliance with our assigned by...
Looks good to me.
Remember, you're going to, uh, record this?
Correct.
Any appeal of this decision shall be made pursuant to NAS general law, and that's spelled, can you take the E on that? Chapters, take the E after the P. Second page.
Oh.
I'll go over that. NAS general law, chapter 48.
Check Peter.
Peter.
Right here.
Oh, oh.
Section 17 has to be filed in 20 days after the date of filing of the decision under the statute. I'll take a motion to approve the special permit for wall-mounted illuminated signage at 111 New Report Turnpike.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Abstentions? Uh, that's unanimous, thank you. That's unanimous, four, four in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Good luck, you're done.
Appreciate it.
And I'll be following up with Kirk, okay?
Yeah, cool, thanks.
In your packets, you have some notes on it, I'll open up to it for the next time in my business. Yes, we have, uh, three minutes, back on time, huh? Could do minutes, you know? Would you like to do minutes, they're fairly short and stuff. Minutes for January 14th?
I missed that one, so I have few, no comments.
Or you want me to not do them?
No.
There's some comments missing, maybe I can just hand Kirk the corrections, and I'll just, I'll just talk about the...
Any, uh, content or contextual?
Yeah, the other, the other thing is, uh, when you're given dates, uh, you put, for example, December 17th, 2014, and the TH after the number, I don't think you really need the TH.
Okay.
THs. In terms of the substantive comments or changes, uh... On the, the last paragraph on page two, instead of Graham's recommends, it should be Graham recommends, so in other words, you gotta take out the apostrophe S and stuff.
Okay.
So, Graham recommends at the board, and then, and then, uh, see this right there?
Okay.
Should take formal action to approve, nonapproval? Should be approve rather than... And then on the third page, the first line, under Artistic Landscapes, Baker notes that Anthony Hurley of Artistic Landscapes LLC has received a ZRC variant, it's not a ZRZ variant, it's a ZBA variant.
I was thinking, uh, ZRC, so that was weird, ZRC, just...
I don't think the ZRC grant variant is as far as that went.
Just a ZRC.
Those are the only comments, uh...
ZRC's moving in, huh? Kirk, do you have a clipboard? I need a clipboard and something for passing around. Back of a folder, trying to...
He asks you to borrow it.
Oh, actually, what about this?
Just put a name and address. Thank you. Don't forget to open the public hearing. I have to, listen. Be very embarrassing if you really don't touch it.
Oh, and certain, certain issues, yeah, they're very, very...
I got the letter back.
Oh, I didn't see some of them. They're broken, yeah.
And certain things are very, took a little over six years.
Yeah.
Well, that's for all pets?
Yeah, it should have been...
I, I did have.
Here, uh, just a motion to approve the minutes.
Uh, who do we, uh, approve the minutes of the last, uh, meeting with the changes that were discussed, uh...
Second, and also, yeah, second by Cliff here, all okay.
Aye.
Steve, approve the minutes?
Yes.
Taking a second, we're passing around, just if you'd be so kind, uh, people that took the time to show up in the snow once again. Interested parties, you put your name and your, um, address on there, please, for the purpose of the minutes and any, um, documentation we may need, the comments that are made, who makes them. All right, I need to open up this hearing, this is, uh, at 8:30. This is a public hearing for an amendment to the zoning map. The town of Raleigh zoning map for properties located along Main Street, otherwise known as the 1A, from the outlying zoning district OD to central zoning district Send D. The notices were published, the legal ads were published, um, by the Town Hall, for two consecutive weeks, Wednesday, February 4th, 2015, and Wednesday, February 11th, 2015. And I have to read the public hearing. Pursuant to MGL notice, uh, sorry, chapter 48, section 5, the Raleigh Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 18th, at 8:30 PM. Meeting room number five at Town Hall Annex Building located at 39 Central Street, Raleigh, Mass., in regards to a proposal to amend the zoning district map of the town of Raleigh, the map, by transferring properties located at 270 Main Street, Raleigh Accessors Map, 24 lot 85, 275 Main Street Map, 26 lot 25-3, 280 Main Street Map, 24 lot 86, 283 Main Street Map, 26 lot 25-4, 286 Main Street Map, 24 lot 86A, 292 Main Street Map, 27 lot 1, 294 Main Street Map, 27 lot 2, 302 Main Street Map, 27 lot 3, 303 Main Street Map, 26 lot 24, 306 Main Street Map, 27 lot 4, 309 Main Street Map, 26 lot 23, 316 Main Street, Map 27 lot... Map twenty-seven Lot five, and three seventeen Main Street Map, twenty-six Lot twenty-one, from the outlying district to the central district. A map showing the above cited lots being transferred from the outlying district to the central district may be inspected at the Planning Board Office at the aforementioned address during regular business hours. Any person or persons interested or wishing to be heard on the zoning proposals should appear at the public hearing at the time and place designated. Kirk Bryant, Chairman. In your packets, there are some notes that Kirk wrote up on this issue. Happy to see that. Nice that people have public hearing for a change. This, we also have some members of the zoning review committee here. Is anyone here from the zoning review committee? Yes, Bob? I think we're expecting a building inspector, I don't know.
No, he actually had, it was, he had something come up.
Okay, good. And Tom Higgin come? Okay. Okay, if you go in your packets, you'll see the map. Also make note that our review engineer, Larry Grant, has come. Not too easy driving, though. All right, I'd like to obviously open up the floor to comments, but also a little bit of history from, I think that's appropriate to, Dr. Kirk, is on the ZRC, it was a meeting that had taken place based on some issues about trying to bring some uses over time into compliance. And the ZRC took this under advisement. The selectmen listened, had a meeting on it that I attended, and kind of kicked the ball into the arena of the planning board and the zoning review committee. So that it would get in the right arena aside from, and also in response to some concerns and an appeal by some business owners in town who this would benefit as well as some of the existing uses over many, many, many years. Raleigh does have an outlying district that has some grandfathered, it's kind of a district that, I don't know how many towns have it, maybe I have Mr. Todd might. But I mean, in my history in town, it's a difficult one for the building inspector sometimes to deal with in terms of, we want certain businesses to be allowed throughout town, but at the same time, they have to be something that does not detract from the character of the town. And some of the hard work that's been done to retain that character through various master planning processes and also the growth in the town as, you know, as a residential town as well. We have a mix of businesses that are important to the town tax base and to bringing people in the town, but we also have residences and sometimes the two conflicting the outlying district. So Bob, you want to talk about the zoning review committee, which is an advisory committee to the planning board for zoning? To the board of selectmen? And to the selectmen board, so thanks. Cliff Pierce is also a member. Kirk, so we have two, David Jakless, so we have two planning board members and the town planner. A member of the board of selectmen and the building inspector and a member of the zoning board of appeals.
Right. So now, it's been, it's been what, I don't know, about three years now, I guess, since we were established. We did have, done, I think, gone to the two town meetings at this point to get some changes done. And we're trying to make it so it's easier to work with as far as the zoning requirements. Try to get some of the potholes, I guess you could call it, this time of year out of the process to make it go a little bit smoother. This one came up at a selectman's meeting, and as you know, you were there. We discussed it quite thoroughly and decided to put it forth and see what would happen. At our last ZR meeting, we discussed it quite a bit about it, we talked about it, and then decided to vote, and actually voted to pass it on to the planning board process. With the hope that it goes through that process, we wind up a town meeting in May and see what happens.
Okay, and so that vote took place, Cliff, that was me and you weren't?
I was not at that meeting.
Were at that meeting. How many members were there?
All other members except for, oh, Don Thurston was not there.
So of the members that were there, was the vote?
Yes. Yes.
So basically, you know, it's one of these issues where, you know, there's overlapping uses, there's new uses, it's a difficult issue, and I think Kirk in his comments has done some analyses. Cliff has certainly has had, Cliff Pierce has had a handle on many of the zoning changes in the central district.
Kirk, I think people should understand that.
But I just want to see if anyone else from town boards are here.
Okay.
Anyone else from any other town boards?
Yeah, I just want to make the point that the planning board will just be making a recommendation on those proposals. I'm sorry. And the actual proposal will be voted on at town meeting if the selectmen decide to go forward with it and put it on the warrant.
Now, so I'm gonna say next, because you had said, hopefully, that it goes through to the process. Now, normally, it's an open process with zoning changes. You advise to us, we make recommendations. It's open town meeting, and it's the towns, it's the people, citizens of the towns, town.
Sorry.
And I believe zoning changes after what, two-thirds vote?
Right.
If a two-thirds vote votes to change the map, then it goes to the AG's officers, ninety days to approve the zoning for the town, and then clerk certifies it and the maps get changed. So the AG's office will look at the process to make sure the process is followed Mass General Law exactly and make any changes to the wording. The wording of this pretty article is really not much wording. It's changing properties from one zone to another. Mr. Pierce, when the chairman had some really complicated zoning articles that, you know, that had a lot of verbiage to it, the AG's office had to go through line by line. So anybody want to, I'll open the floor. I think, I don't want, you know, the planning board is in possession, then I'll also open it to members of the planning board. But I would like the people that took the time to come on, I'd like to.
Can I just explain a little what this would do so people understand?
I'd like to hear the people. No, I would like to hear some comments.
Okay.
I would like to hear an explanation first, because I really don't understand.
Yeah, brief, brief.
Oh, yeah.
Brief and unbiased.
This proposal would take these sixty-five acres and transfer them from the outlying district, which is a residential district, to the central district, which is a residential commercial district. There's a broad range of commercial uses that are currently allowed in the central district. Also, multifamily housing is currently allowed in the central district. So if this proposal goes forth and is adopted by the town, that would mean that you have this broad range, theoretically, have a broad range of commercial uses in this, in this area, the sixty-five acres, as well as multifamily housing.
I would like to, okay, thank you, Mr. Pierce. Like to point out, as I did in my first comments, that I live in the outlying district. Many people do in this town. And there are substantial number of businesses in the outlying district. We have a small residential district in the town, but we do have mixed residential and commercial in the central district as well. And that's some of the difficulty in the outlying district, but the representation by Vice Chairman Pierce, by Cliff, is correct. Predominantly in the outlying district is residential. However, it doesn't take anyone who's been in this town or even going through the town to see numerous, numerous businesses in the outlying district. Some grandfathered, some being switched over through the zoning board of appeals process many, many times, many times. And some of those are agrarian businesses, some of those are, you know, farming businesses in the outlying district as well. They've been there, so the outlying district tries to scrutinize transfer businesses from one to another to look at some criteria. So it doesn't impact residences in a detrimental way. On the other hand, if, I believe if outlying district businesses have been enacted for two years or more, then they would revert to residential, is that correct?
Nonconforming.
Because in essence, just about all businesses except for in-home businesses are nonconforming in the outlying district. Is that correct?
Yes. But this article would allow brand-new businesses in this area that we're talking about, so.
I want to actually go through some of them.
Yeah. I mean, now, you can just basically build single-family dwellings in this area, the sixty-five acres. If this article passes, you'd get any kind, possibly many kinds of new businesses. You could have multifamily housing. You know, that's the truth, I'm not trying to be alarmist, but that it would open this area up for brand, these types of brand-new businesses that haven't been there before.
I also want to open up, actually, it's very important, I think you've done a lot of research on this. So Kirk Baker, our planner, has helped out the planning, and actually, this is something, I'd be glad to get you a copy of his analysis, brief analysis. He continues to do more analysis. Some of the, the zoning, the building inspector, who's also the zoning enforcement officer, is a proponent of the proposed rezoning. Checked with the assessors in regards to the impact on property taxes. Found that the change in zoning for residential, commercial would lower the property tax in the short run. However, this doesn't necessarily address all questions of the long-term impacts in regards to property value. While the property is conceivable more valuable in long-term frame due to expansion of potential commercial retail uses developed in concert with large-scale development, plan each property owner's prognosis for being able to get the same value from residential property and commercial district than if it were in a residential district seems less optimistic. And this, again, I think it's very, very difficult to predict, I mean, I have some personal experience in this. But at the same time, it's the same as if, if somebody had a residential house and someone wanted to put in a, you know, a gas station or a car dealership right next to your house, it might necessarily, that might detract from the, you know, what you would get from your house. At the same time, someone might come and offer you more for the property for another use that would be allowed. Some of the uses that, there are overlapping uses. I would note there's much overlap in the permitted residential uses between the two zoning districts and the associated review processes, but which would be site plan review and special permits that the planning board gives out. But one important difference is the introduction of the multifamily class of uses. What, less than five units and greater than five units? And the introduction of numerous non-residential uses to the area. These uses include small retail, and this all is on the town website. You can read this right in the zoning in the town website, it's right there. Which is, this has been gleaned from that.
Yeah.
It's not like a secret document someplace. These uses include small retail, antique shops, consumer services, banks, credit unions without drive-throughs, funeral establishments, restaurants without live entertainment, and we don't allow formula fast foods, aren't prohibited, professional and business offices, medical and dentistry clinics, historic charitable philanthropic associations, research labs and facilities, overnight lodging, hotels, motels, inns, museums, libraries, filling stations, again, it's not like someone just go, I want, again, special permit, site plan review. Motor vehicle repairs in our service, special permit and site plan review. Again, and when those processes take into account, you know, the surrounding area, water supply, you know, all lighting, all those various issues, you might, if you were here, you know, even on Route One in the light industry district, commercial districts, we look at lighting, noise, traffic. We look at those even in commercial districts. So there are pros and cons, like I said, they did, we're an advisory board. We will be taking a vote tonight to either, what, that's to recommend or not to recommend this at town meeting and to have the town warrant. Sometimes you see, you know, finance committee recommends, and this would say, you know, this would be a zoning change article. Are there any other ones in there? There's a couple of them, right?
What's that?
Are there other zoning in the town?
This year? No.
This is the only one?
This is it.
In the past, there's always usually been a couple of them.
Yeah.
And this would be, planning board recommends or does not recommend. That's our role. I think some business owners here, I know that for sure.
All right, how far?
Can you say who you are?
Frank, three oh three, me. That line there, where does it go to?
It, I didn't show the entire part, so just because of the map existing that I was.
Does that continue down to the road or?
It follows the property lines.
Okay. So how far do those lots go?
Pretty much, I wish I could have done on a larger scale, but.
Yeah, well, so.
But.
If you're gonna proceed with this, you would have to, you'd have to change that map, that would be accepted.
That's the first thing I saw.
I'd have to do both, I'd have to do both, because the only way I could get with the program that I had.
Yeah, I mean, it's good for our purposes, I think.
Yeah, for this first, for the discussion, you know, public hearing, we can still.
But it incorporates all of them.
Yeah. Continue the discussion.
Incorporates his whole property.
Yeah, the whole property.
How far does that go, Frank? Your lot?
Mine? Set piece there.
Yeah, it goes to the back property.
It goes down to, well, if I just continued this, well, this line here down, it triangles off this way, this way. There's a spring in there.
Yeah.
And. The next question is, is. Was this your idea or was somebody else driving this? I mean, was it the planning board's idea to just do this little section or?
What little section?
The sixty-five acres. And my question, I guess, is the central business districts, other, yeah, central district, is why it wasn't further down? Why didn't it go to the railroad bridge or something?
What do you mean?
Why wasn't this bigger part of the central district?
You mean, why did the central district itself not initially carry on through?
Why was it just cut off here at Warehouse Lane rather than extended down at least past Railroad Avenue or?
I think because most of the traffic and the retail uses that are very prominent in the town over the years, especially on weekends, over the years, and these are retail uses are located in this area. That's why.
Oh, I was thinking of the restaurant down there.
No, it's not, some nonconforming uses down there.
And the automobile.
There's just a couple, but not anywhere near, doesn't draw the traffic into town in terms of the retail volume that these do. And, you know.
It probably should be mentioned as far as the, being the only retail use, the flea market currently, being the only retail use, that's actually in this.
But it's also a question I think can be, it's a good question, I mean. I mean, Bob?
Basically, the line got drawn at the historic district commission line.
Thank you. That's answered. I wasn't at the meeting, I don't remember the meeting, so.
It was kind of an easy way out.
The ZRC, the zoning review committee analyzed and looked at this and, you know, it doesn't emanate necessarily, it doesn't, we're an advisory, they're an advisory board to us. It doesn't originate here. Planning boards don't, you know, we, this isn't something that.
So where did this idea come from? The sixty-five acres?
Just, just it.
Sorry, it was brought to the. It came from?
The Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen, okay. Gotcha. All righty.
So anybody who wants to put in a multi, an apartment building or a gas station or whatever, they have to get past the historic commission as well as the planning board?
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't think the historic commission can disapprove uses. The planning board can. You have to be, get a special permit from the planning board, and that's a discretionary determination, but planning boards approve most of the things that come before them. I think that's a fact. The vast majority of things that come before town boards get approved, so you need to wait.
Just a question of conditions that go along with.
Most of the time. Occasionally, we deny an applicant, a proposed project, but that's really not the norm, so.
Historic or strictly advisory?
Well, I don't think, I don't think the historic commission can say, we're not going to approve this use, this used car lot, this filling station. They deal with the issues of the exterior facades of buildings, the aesthetics.
Right. And compatibility to area.
Well, I don't know about that.
They try, no, we will.
Well, they may try. I don't think they have the legal authorities to do it.
Right.
Right? Do you agree with that, Chris?
I do. I think it's, yeah, it's really just the aesthetics and.
No, it's like, it's an advisory to us. We take their recommendations very seriously and usually wait for our decision until the historical commission. And we predicate our decisions based on having an applicant go through the historical commission process. We don't truncate it or, you know.
No, I know.
Yeah.
I think this opens this area town up to a lot of uses that abutters wouldn't necessarily find consistent with their residential uses. I mean, somebody could buy one of these parcels that, you know, with an adequate size and say they're going to put a mini storage facility on it, and frankly, I don't think that's necessarily the best type of business we want for the town, and yet they'd have the right as a matter, well, they'd have the, as an owner, they'd have the right to petition for that special use, and as Cliff just said, they usually get permitted once they, you know, provided they conform with the bylaws. So I think this use could potentially have a negative consequence on this area.
I don't think that's allowed in the central district. That kind of usage, that's another.
Well, okay, so maybe that wasn't a great example, but.
Yeah, I listed a lot of.
I mean, like, I'm thinking if Mike over here decides.
I listed a lot of uses there.
Put in a gas station next to me.
Correct.
I'm worried about my freshwater spring, which is on my property.
Well, that, there's other conservation would be involved, so with the Department of.
I'm worried about town water with the uses on the street I'm on, so, and it's a shame. And I don't like it, I'm very concerned with that.
On the other hand, if you're worried about your residential house being next to a gas station, well, this would certainly, you know, justify that concern.
Unfortunately, we have a gas station in the zone too right now. It's not something that's, it's an appealing thing to want to allow going forward. That's a grandfathered use. It's a nonconforming.
Michael Tracy, three seventeen main. Could you just clarify what you said before, that Mr. Todd had asked where this came from? Why, why the sixty-five acres? Why was that drawn? And I believe you said, because it's the primary.
That was brought to the selectmen's.
Excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. You said it's the primary area that is the most traffic and for retail and all that, but Mr. Mary behind me, when asked, said it was the historical commission line that prompted this. So could you just clarify?
No, I'm saying because of nonconforming retail uses that are in the area, that's why it came to the selectmen's attention. That's all, that's all I said.
Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the thing that has prompted this was the desire for the owner of the lot where the flea market is to expand his parking facility across the street.
It's actually not quite. What happened was they, we had Mr. Conley come in and file an application or file a license for a flea market, and going through the zoning process with the building inspector, the building inspector found that it wasn't allowable there.
Right.
Yeah, this helps explain it for you as well, your question.
So, if any people at the Board of Selectmen, we discussed it, and it was a suggestion made that we changed the zoning. So the ZRC wound up with it, and the ZRC discussed it and decided that, well, we'll give it a try. I mean, we can't change the zoning. The town has to change the zoning, so if we don't go through the process, then nothing happens.
So to clarify, there's a proposed flea market?
Did you give your name for the record?
I just did.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
Michael Tracy, sorry.
Thank you. And your address?
I gave that as well, sir.
Three seventeen main street.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like me to give it again for the record, or?
I'm the chairman, I control the meeting, okay? And I don't appreciate the attitude, continue. Thank you.
You don't appreciate what attitude, sir?
I don't, we don't need to be flippant, get to the point.
I was flippant.
Get to the point, please.
Sir, come on, let's, let's move, let's move along. Just, come on, the guys, you know, Jesus. Let's calm down here, I realize.
Maybe I can, maybe I can clarify. Nate Conley, two eighty-six main, okay? The reason why we're all here is because of what I, I tried to set up, get my flea market license, okay? Currently, right now, I have been down there parking cars, alleviating a lot of the stress on Main Street. I'm trying to get a few vendors that have obviously voiced, you know, interest in putting some tables on my land to elaborate what Mr. Todd has been doing. And so I'm going through the right channels to try and get my flea market license, okay? To just basically make it worth my while to get up at four thirty in the morning on a Sunday and spend half my day down there after I've already put in fifty dollars for the week. So through talking with the selectmen and talking with the building inspector, this was the route that we were told to take. I'm not trying to hide anything here. I've lived in this town my whole life, my whole family's been all about open space. We feel that that property would just enhance what's already going on and help things maybe be a little bit more efficient. But, as you know, we own quite a bit of land in Raleigh, and we do have to pay our taxes, and I'm just trying to find a way to do that. And this seems to be something that is, I see as conforming to what's going on in that side of town. And just trying to, you know, I don't want to disrupt the neighbors, I don't want to put any burden on any of them. I don't feel that anything is going to change as far as traffic or anything to that effect. But obviously, you know, you've got to go through the right channels. So everybody's been very helpful, selectmen have been helpful to me, and everybody I've talked to so far has been, you know, encouraged and encouraged me to go through this channel, so this is what's going on. Maybe I, maybe I should have stopped by and talked to you.
I just, I was just looking for an explanation for the project, I appreciate that, that's the information I was looking for. Sir, I was not being flippant in that, and I, I'm honestly confused by that exchange. I'm just trying to get.
No, I would like to hear concerns about the zoning article from people who live in the area. I'd like to hear some, you know, on both sides, because I think the planning board needs to hear valid concerns that townspeople have, that's all.
And that's, that's why I'm here.
Well, chairman, I mean, I understand there might be some confusion about the historic district line, but the historic district line is drawn on full parcels, okay? So we didn't break anybody's parcel up by putting a line through the middle of it, and you know what happens when that comes along. We had that issue up on April Street at Route One.
We did.
So that was one of the things we were thinking about when we decided to pick that line, only because it, it's a crooked line, but it follows the lot lines rather than just drawing a straight line. So it, for no other reason than that, that it would happen to be convenient to stop it there.
Was that the original thought?
What, what? Stop the line.
Just follow it on lot lines?
I would assume it was, Frank.
Because the original one was right down through the middle of the fine, Black Street's wall, straight down to, say, Rowan Allen's house.
Is this proposal consistent with the master plan?
No.
You want to elaborate on it?
Sure. In two thousand and three, is that the right year?
Yeah, two thousand and three.
The town went through the master planning process. We ended up with a master plan for the town, Raleigh's first.
We hired a consultant.
First comprehensive master plan, and part of that process, we hired a professional planning consultant. We also had a lot of public meetings and heard opinions from people in the town, and this resulted in the master plan. One thing that the planner noticed when he came to town, again, this is a professional, that we had a very large central district, five hundred and forty-three acres?
Five hundred.
That's the existing central district, in which a broad range of commercial uses are allowed, but he noted that most areas of our central district are actually residential neighborhoods, so he felt this was not a particularly good thing because it created potential for new businesses moving into residential neighborhoods that would, that would create conflict and people would be upset and so forth, and might lower property values as well. So one of his recommendations, which, which the master plan committee adopted, was to actually restrict the area of the central district. Now, that proposal never got enacted, but what's being proposed today is the exact opposite of that. Instead of restricting these business uses to a core area of the central district, we would actually be increasing them, spreading, you know, spreading them out over an additional sixty-five acre area.
We did do a central district.
What's that?
We did an overlay district in Southern.
Yeah, but it never went to town meeting.
That's right, never, no. That overlay never went through.
Then, for the same reason, is this just expands that, that likelihood that you could have mixed use in a broader district.
Right. We have a, right now, the sixty-five acres are primarily residential. Under this proposal, that could change, and any number of businesses theoretically could start there, get the necessary approvals, and then open for business.
So right now, we have businesses on one A that are not allowed by current zoning?
If they're prior nonconforming uses, yeah, right.
And they wouldn't be allowed to be expanded?
Well, you know, for the purposes of just keeping this conversation going, and we all know that Todd Farm's for sale, it's pretty unlikely guys would come along and say, I want to use that spot for a flea market. So let's anticipate that when it gets sold, it's going to change its use, and that pre-existing nonconforming use is going to expire.
Well, see, that's not, we can't, as a planning board.
Okay, so let's not assume that. Let's just, let's, let's just, as planners, though, say, do we want residential use out of that spot, or do we want?
You can't assume what's going to happen, but I think you've got to recognize that that's a possibility, that.
Either way is a possibility.
Someone could buy any one of these parcels and decide, oh, I don't want to use this for a flea market anymore or for a single-family house, I want to use it for a used car lot.
I mean, on the outlying district, they, they're limited to residential use, though.
Pretty much.
So then why would we go ahead and give them the opportunity to put a car lot here?
That's what we'd be doing.
And for that reason, I'm, you know, I know where my voice on this board sits. I don't think we should expand the possibility that we can further mix uses in districts that are otherwise protected now.
I'd like to make a comment.
And I agree with you.
But I'd like to make a comment that the planning board then should be more vigilant in terms of, if we're a planning board, when it comes to the scrutiny of nonconforming uses that are throughout the town, including some of the ones that you brought to our attention.
I think the neighbors should have a lot to say too, though. They're butted off, you know, that's, that's.
That's, that's why I want to hear from some more neighbors. I mean, you're the property, I mean, I know that if I was living, I would be at the meeting thinking, I've to think carefully about my property values, but I also think on both sides, you know.
I think, too, a lot of us, you know, we were, this came late. The date on your letter is the fourth. The meter says the eleventh. The post office, the thirteenth. It was a holiday weekend. I don't, I don't feel like I've had enough time to think about this, review this, or study it. I think we need more, I think we all need more time, and that may be why not as many people as you wanted to came.
That was actually above and beyond, it's not required to.
It's not even, yeah. And I can't speak to the post office and metering and this and that and this kind of weather.
I'm assuming.
I get one piece of mail each day, and then I get about, you know, forty-five in the next.
Yeah, but it's, it affects us, so we should have the time.
Without a doubt, we should.
To look at it, you know?
But it's not, it's within the process.
Yeah, the process involves.
We followed the legal requirements, but, you know, I think your plan is well taken.
Yeah, but I'm asking you to go a little farther.
I mean, we could hold a continued public hearing, but.
I don't, I don't mind doing that.
Well, I can sympathize with the people, because, you know, look at the MVA, that's only going to run it now.
You know, you say it can affect the post, well, I had trouble getting to the post office as well.
No, I don't have any problem.
In fact, they couldn't even find it.
That's why, we're volunteers and meet according to what, we're here, public hearing to me is the most important part of the process of what we do.
What are the limitations of the central district? I mean, you can't just throw anything you want in the central district.
All those things are required by special permit, so there's a list of uses that are.
Yeah, I went that.
Yes, yeah, I would like to see something.
I read, I read those in the beginning, I did read those.
If you, if somebody come along in the central district and want to do, you know, whatever, you guys could, you guys could say no, right?
No. We'd have to allow a use that was permitted with conditions.
We don't.
They can restrict you so hard that it's not economically feasible. I'm not saying anything wrong, I'm just saying you do have to control that.
Well, we have some discretion.
Mark, Mark's in the process right now.
No, it's got nothing to do with me.
The meeting got closed.
We have some discretion to deny projects that are allowed under zoning and require a special permit, but the reality is that planning boards and town boards don't exercise that discretion very often, it's only in a rare case that we say no. I think, I think that's the reality in most towns, so I think if I was a resident of this area, I think, I would want to take that into consideration, that, so, and so by opening up the zoning to these new uses, there's a very good chance that if someone wants to do that, one of these new uses, these new businesses in your area, he's going to get the approval to do it. I think that's just the reality.
And also, planning boards change over time, it is an elected board.
Right.
I was going to, Kirk, you doing some research on values and, I was just always wondering, if the Salt Mash Antiques got permit to build a building in Todd's farm, say, because they bought it, whatever, and they want to build it. I don't know what they pay for taxes, I would assume they paid ten thousand dollars in taxes. Now, if someone built a house there and had two children in the school system, they'd pay the same tax, but it seemed like Salt Mash Antiques is paying seven thousand dollars, but there's no children in the school system, so now that's automatically seven thousand dollars profit for the town to put towards our children's education, because it is a business. Or if you have a house with two children, now each child earns four thousand dollars a year, you're already in the negatives.
Mark, the, yeah, the planning.
I know, there's like a plus and minus.
I know, but the planning boards, we're not in that game, you know? People, we've heard that so often. And you can read studies on that, but another argument might be made that people raise the tax base in a town by coming into a town that has excellent school systems, that those people tend to be, many entrepreneurs come in, these people have in-home businesses, consultancies, they raise, look, they raise the property value with the homes, homes with higher property values, and Raleigh's fortunate. I think Raleigh as a whole has. I think Raleigh as a whole has retained its value because of the character. It's an appealing town. And if you look at, if you can talk to realtors, I mean, I've lived here long enough to see property value. But overall, you're lucky we live where we are compared. You're lucky we don't live in some, like, parts of Florida or something, you know?
Florida.
Or even parts of Maryland where it just dropped off a cliff. Didn't drop off a cliff here. And it doesn't, because we try, we try to retain some aspects of the town that make it so that people want to come here and live. But there's always the interplay between what, businesses and residences. But, you know, to say that you want to have a town with no children because the school system is burdensome.
No, no, no.
No, we've heard this argument when we have country clubs.
What, you mix it up just enough, like...
No, over fifty-five developments, country club. The market is what drives things, you know? Not whether, the market drives things. Anybody else live on the, in the area?
Walter Noff of Second Warehouse Lane. I'm going to butt into this proposal. I see the existing flea market as being a kind of a transitory thing. You know, people, on a Sunday, people plop down there and sell stuff. A few years back, the, some concerns over the future of it, a little downturn in the market, and the flea market shrank significantly. A lot of, a lot of vendors didn't show up. It was in, it was almost on a verge of going away. Now it's kind of, you know, come back up again and again. And, you know, it's kept in fantastic condition as well, so that's a big plus for us. But I hate to see a change to the, the kind of rural feel to the neighborhood that we have, that to expand the central district and put more businesses in our area, if you will, I think is a negative thing. We do have a few sprinkling of businesses around. Most of them, I understand, are grandfathers. They can't go away. The used car lot, the machine job, Agawam Service. There are a few businesses in there, the boatyard.
DEX Boatyard.
Yeah, but, you know, they are grandfathers, I understand.
Boat building.
I'm sorry.
Boat building, as, you know.
Oh, Jack.
Yeah, running off boats. And that's enough. Another flea market popped up across from Mill Petroleum. I assume that's a conforming use. I don't, I don't know. I'd hate to see more flea markets begin to pop up all around town.
Would you like to see me doing the land?
I'd rather see it have not been stripped down to nothing and left in its natural state.
Anyone else?
Well... The purpose of the halfway market is, is to keep the land open. It's been going since seventy-two.
Yeah, I just want to say that I have no objection to the specific objective of this proposal. I understand, I mean, I think it's great that Raleigh has a flea market. But I just think that what this would do would have a lot of unintended consequences that would be detrimental to the neighborhood and the town.
Potential, potential, in my opinion, potential.
Well, potentially detrimental. I think they would be detrimental, because right now, it's essentially a residential neighborhood. And I think this would change the character of that neighborhood or could very well change the character of that neighborhood. And I don't think that's a good thing, either for the neighborhood or the town. But, you know, so I'd like to see us focus more on how we can allow the specific objective, the flea market, rather than opening this up, this area up, to a whole bunch of new businesses.
What do you suggest?
Well, there's, there's one possibility, and I understand, I wasn't at the ZRC meeting. I sent an email suggesting, I understand the members had some, some problems with it. But we, you could propagate a bylaw that allows flea markets or antique shops in the outlying district, which is what this is now, with a special permit from the planning board. So that would, if such a thing was passed, it would mean that you could come to the planning board for a permit to do what you want to do. And I think that would, probably not be very controversial, but I understand that some people feel that that could be a problem, because it would theoretically allow these things throughout the outlying district, which is a pretty large district in town.
It's a predominant district in the town.
So you might end up with flea markets in different parts of the, of the outlying district. However, I feel that this bylaw could be drafted precisely so that as a practical matter, it would only happen on your lot if we, if we do it carefully. So I believe consideration should be given to that.
Now, would that have to go to a special town meeting?
Yes, it still would, because there's a change in the zoning bylaw.
What's the chances of that happening?
Your guess is as good as mine. I mean...
It seems a little less controversial, because you wouldn't be affecting as many butters and parts of the land in the district.
You know, I don't want to, you know, if people are against the whole zoning change, we've got a lot of pushback on that. If there's another avenue that's, that is going to be more pleasurable to everybody, then I'm all for it.
I'm not sure how it could be crafted for one or two lots. I mean, the state attorney general, I mean, how do you avoid spot zoning?
You could say...
But again, I'm totally open-minded. I would like to find a solution to the, to the issue that...
You could say they're allowed on lots of a certain size, or you set the lot size, you know, large enough so that it would be practical, you know, in many other areas of town. You're only going to do this Sunday?
The most popular...
You could limit the operation to Sunday?
You know, he's not going to just...
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to be restricted.
He's not going to limit himself to Sunday.
I don't want to be restricted.
He wants to have a dwelling.
I would prefer to have the same, you know, regulations that Frank has.
But he's, he's only open on Sunday, right?
Correct.
Well, the store in the barn's open Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Right, and there's no restriction. That store in the barn could be open every day of the week if it wanted to.
I really don't want to restrict myself. Strictly, I mean, it's going to be, it's Sunday. Sunday's a big draw.
There was a time, it had quite a few things, and it was quite busy, that store at one time, in the barn, right?
Well, it's been, it's been years. It's been rehabbed, you might say, the cattle alpine. It's insulated and it has heat and things like that now. And it's a, it's the first phase of trying to maintain the barn, be able to keep it from falling in. Lot of work, lot of money.
I appreciate the comments. I mean, I maybe...
Another proposal, and this is just a thought of mine. I'm not sure, you know, if town council would have any negative comments about this, but we could create what's called an overlay zoning district, which basically, for example, we could take these sixty-five acres, say it's an overlay zoning district in which antique shops and flea markets are allowed. And that way, the advantage of that is you'd be able theoretically to get approval for your, for your flea market. But that move would not result in all these other types of businesses being able to move into the area.
It makes an existing use conformant. It's a chose, but it makes an existing use, even though you said it's for sale, you're right. Which is what happens.
So it would be a much more focused bylaw. They would just be limited to enabling you to do what you want to do, but it wouldn't enable someone else to put in a used car lot or a restaurant.
Or a gas station.
If I sold it. If I sold it.
Yeah, the overlay district would limit the uses to whatever they specify. Right now, we're saying flea market, but not gas station, banking, retail.
See, and it's the age-old clash sometimes between residences and businesses. I mean, just because you own a lot doesn't mean you don't want to sell it to a business, because businesses might pay more for it, you know? Such as we had, you know, the Village Green. I mean, that's where, you know, in return for open space, people are allowed, you know, people are allowed to do some townhouses in certain areas of the town. And obviously, if you're building that kind of development, you're making, you're investing more, but, you know, potential returns more than, you know, a couple of single-family homes, you know?
All I want to do is utilize a beautiful piece of property that's down there. And I feel that I've made a huge improvement to nothing but poison ivy and...
Mother nature.
Just a nut, a bunch of junk trees and dying trees and...
Well, that's an opinion. We're not here for the, we all have opinions on that, including myself. I'm probably leaning more towards a member of the audience's opinion. But, you know, that's why we have conservation commissions and that's why. But also, I also believe that people own land generally, if they're within the bylaws, can typically do what they want with their own land. Any other comments from people that came out here tonight in the snow? I mean, I'm willing to, can buy some time, you know? I think Cliff here is thinking out loud, you know?
He just brought up some, you know, looking for alternatives and doing it so that it doesn't become...
If the planning board, I don't believe tonight necessarily that the votes are there. I know Steve's been pretty quiet.
Well... This is the first, first we've spoken or I even heard about it. And I don't know, like the lady here was saying, I don't think all the neighbors are really here or are god-informed about it. I realize it was posted in two weeks, everything was done the way it was supposed to. But I, I think I'd like to hear the people speak more.
That's a good point. I'll take a motion and continue it. Maybe that can show time for you to look at maybe an alternative more focused. I like the ideas to focus it.
Well, if we're going to do one of these other, other alternatives, we'd have to advertise the public hearing all over again. Because it's a pretty different thing.
Do we have time, Bob?
It's going to be close, but the public's closing in.
I'm willing to hold the meetings.
We need to give notice for a meeting to make an advisory opinion?
No.
No, maybe misconstrue things. But if we decided to pursue this overlay district option, I think that we should really start over again.
That, right, from that perspective, yeah.
You mean...
But I still, I want to, I want to take your course.
We can continue this.
Yeah, we can, and I think, because I want to take, I think there's a valid points with the weather and getting this, not having time to digest it or talk to your neighbors. It's important, you know? I don't want to shove, I don't want to say, "Okay, I can call for a vote right now." And it may be three to two we recommend, or three to two we don't recommend. Or one, two, three, it might be two to two. It'd be two to two, you're right. I was thinking, Gene. So it may be two to two, or maybe, so the point is, that really doesn't accomplish anything. I think we're thinking out, this has brought up some points, maybe to do it in a way that doesn't open the area up to uses that really may or may not detract from the character of that area as it stands right now.
I like the overlay, the sound of the overlay.
That would have to emanate from the Board of Selectmen, though, correct? Because we're, I mean, again, we're just here to make an opinion, give an opinion. If you want to consider an overlay, that would have to be the Board of Selectmen that...
Not necessarily. I mean, it's going to be the planning board that makes the final decision. But if you want to run it by the ZRC, then you could do that. Well, that's, we should have a, if we're going to consider these other proposals, Bob, I would think we should have another ZRC meeting, because that's the job of...
I agree.
I think this is...
Don't we have something scheduled on that?
We're trying to schedule one for the next two weeks, more than the next two weeks.
I mean, the dialogue and the feedback and, you know, you weren't at the meeting, I mean, can maybe result in...
Yeah, right.
A better thought process. But, and we're just trying to really work. I mean, I look at, I'm trying to look at all sides here, you know?
I don't think there's enough people here myself. I think that we've got to have every one of them that are involved in this plan. And every one of them's here.
Would, would that, an overlay that allowed parking and flea market antique sales, would that be something you'd want to pursue, or are you looking for other uses as well?
That's all I'm looking for. I'm, I'm...
People love the helicopter, so...
I'm interested, I had nothing to do with it.
On your balloon ride, that's not bad.
I'm interested in...
People who just advertise.
I'm just interested in doing something that's going to work in the community. And I am going to be so sensitive to the neighbors. I understand that. I'm in a business where I have to be super sensitive to neighbors. And I am, and I run a very successful business in compost. And that can really stink. So I know all about neighbors.
I smell it coming down my street, and I'll put that in public.
But it's great, it's great compost.
I come down, there's trucks come down the street.
I want to be sensitive to all the neighbors. I understand that, and I want to be wide open with everything I want to do there. It's just, I'm just trying to make it worth my while. If I can't, then I'm going to shut the thing down, and I'm going to do something else. And then we got parking issues and traffic issues and everything else. I think I provided a service down there. I used to be down there towing cars off my property. And I smartened up a little bit and started parking them. So it's working out okay.
Can't be enjoying them.
It's working out okay, but it's not working out well enough.
All right, well, we've heard, yeah, that was Selectmen.
So there's other avenues I can go. I just soon keep that a nice, open feel, the way it looks, beautiful. I'm totally open to any town events that, you know, welcome everybody on my property. Just want it to be open space, leave it that way. I'm not interested in filling this thing full of townhouses. I've lived in this town my whole life. I love this town.
I don't need another hotel, huh?
No, I don't want to do any of that. I just want to go down there on a Sunday, Sunday morning, spend the day there. And then I mow the grass on Saturdays and it stays just the way it is. That's all I want to do.
Do we have any other comments? Because I'm going to take them off.
I just had a quick question. If, even if this gentleman, this Mr. Conley, decides he doesn't want to do those things, if we do redistrict it, can't somebody else do those things that even he's saying he doesn't want to do?
They can buy his property and do those things, by coming in front of us.
Okay.
Or not us, some other planning board.
Is this particular rezoning proposal being prompted by that one particular project? Or is there another purpose that this is connected to?
No, just the recognition that, you know, over the years, there have been some nonconforming uses and trying to deal with it.
Well, I think in all honesty...
In particular, that brought it to a head.
It prompted, yes.
He did, and the Selectmen.
I don't think there are other nonconforming uses in this particular area. I could be wrong about that. But it's, it's being motivated by, by this problem with the flea market.
And sometimes, Bob, you're not in agreement. Sometimes the Selectmen are in a position of giving out permits for things kind of blind, and they need to, you know, it's really important for the boards to communicate. And in this case, it's brought to my attention, and the Selectmen weren't running blind anymore because they understood, you know, the whole bigger picture, you know?
It's unfortunate that Ken Ward couldn't have been here tonight, because he, you know, this was sort of, you know, the direction he thought that I should go. He might have been able to explain.
Well, we're still going in a direction, but if we can fine-tune it so that it doesn't affect...
And I think that's the premise of fine-tuning it, because, I mean, we don't want to expand the use for, to try to accommodate something that I think we all see as a benefit that would otherwise have other unintended consequences potentially. If we can fine-tune it so that we can allow what, keep the good and avoid the potential for something, you know, we can't foresee what it might be, let's do that, or at least consider it.
I mean, we don't always agree with it. The state law goes on and on and on for roomful. But when you think about open town meeting process, you know, you could have a few people, you know, really directing where a town goes without having this open process where it can go to town meeting. I mean, zoning is pretty important for, you know, having a town, because people have a say in what kind of town they want. And it just, that's why they make this process a little harder than you may think it needs to be. You can't just change, like, can't just hire a planner and just writes up new zoning. Or a planning board that can just vote and write up new zoning.
Yeah.
And the state, you know, there may be some states in this country that may be different, but that's not Massachusetts.
Well, I'm just going by what I was...
And that's why one board does one thing, another board does another. There's checks and balances amongst the boards.
Sure.
The CBA, the Board of Selectmen, and the planning, as the Conservation Commission, throw them in as well.
So the ZRC is meeting, do we know when that date is?
It hasn't been set yet.
But if we did, we're doing another meeting on the eleventh. Well, we already have another meeting scheduled for the eleventh. Is there any chance the ZRC's going to meet before then?
You'll meet before then.
Oh, yeah, but it wasn't going to be, this wasn't going to be on the agenda.
Well, it is now.
Well, it is now, yeah.
It is now.
Because we're actually discussing... Cause we're actually discussing...
I'm not, I'm not necessarily gonna ask for a vote, I'm gonna ask for a motion to continue the hearing.
I, I would, would we continue this discussion on, uh, the, the redistricting?
You know, based on your people, you're making good points, that you haven't had time, as soon as a towns person says, I don't have time to really understand, I need more time. And we have it, I'm gonna, but in the meantime, we can get some things happening.
Wouldn't this ultimately, everybody in this, within this map, wouldn't that ultimately bring the value of everybody's property up?
I tried to touch on, it could go both ways, but you have to understand that the way our zoning is written down, Mr. Pierce made it clear in the beginning, there's a number and number of uses that could swing it both ways. You know, just because, look, Mr. Hamilton put, you know, just because he put all that money into the center of town, right in the center of town, to get some retail going in that center of town, that's not a slam dunk, that doesn't mean people are gonna be, you know, running over each other and falling over each other to buy a land further down the street to put up retail uses.
I mean, if someone's looking to buy a house, I think, I think, I'm not an expert, but I think it would have an adverse effect on, on the price that he's gonna get if there's, you know, a used car lot next door.
You might internet an appraiser, you might ask an appraiser, or you might ask Pauline, you might ask Raleigh Realty about that. They're very good, I mean, the people at Raleigh Realty know the town, I mean...
I mean, I think it's been shown multifamily housing that...
John or Pauline, I know.
That has, that has no effect on home values, I've seen people done studies and concluded that, but I, I don't think you can assume the same thing for some of these commercial uses.
But ultimately, isn't it really the two properties we're talking about is, is mine and Mr. Todd's?
That are flea markets, yeah.
That are land that's sizable.
Right.
That could be, something could be done, right? The rest of them are little tiny lots.
Something could be done in terms of a different kind of commercial use?
Right.
Well...
I mean, we're really talking about the houses that are, you know...
No, you make a point in terms of who owns the lots, but we're not into that business as to who owns the lots today and who's gonna...
That's, that's a thing.
Who's gonna own the lots tomorrow. I mean, all of that is speculation, you probably, people in this room know better than we do as to the future of the properties on the street.
And homes can be torn down too, you know, that happens. So, you really don't know what's gonna end up.
We typically, as a board, we know and the master plan, there are parts of town that we would like to really, um, we've expanded over the years, we've expanded the commercial district on Route One.
Yeah, and we also should mention, this is a scenic byway that we're talking about and I think that needs to be...
It's one of the few in town, you know. They're pros and, yeah.
I hear you.
Look, you don't have to travel around town, you know, people can make up their own opinions and they have their own opinions as to which businesses look appealing and look which, um, don't look very appealing.
Would you ever allow somebody to come in and throw a McDonald's up in the central district? Could you...
But that's against, not anymore.
No.
That's not, that wouldn't be allowed. But they couldn't as a, consistent with the bylaws, it wouldn't be allowed.
That wouldn't ever happen.
No.
But if you have a historical town like Raleigh, um, look...
Well, a pizza shop, some shop, that would, that could happen in a central district.
Look, the capital of Vermont, Montpelier, doesn't allow McDonald's and they fought it right into Supreme Court.
So, I mean, it's, where's that line? If you don't like it, and nobody wants it, then there's a night...
You just have to read, the zoning is where it is now and it can be changed only through a process or something. All right, I'm gonna take a motion, we have, we have some other visits to do, but I do wanna revisit this on the 11th, all right? And we'll do it at eight o'clock, not so late next time, eight o'clock, right?
How about, wait, you got something for seven thirty?
No, seven thirty's where I'm taking it.
Who's on seven thirty?
Uh, the...
Mark.
Yeah.
It may not take too long, this time.
Seven forty-five, just for, so people...
Seven forty-five, seven forty-five on March 11th, all right?
I work until after seven.
What?
I work until after seven.
Well, how many?
Eight, I can do.
Eight o'clock. That's what I hear, is eight o'clock, okay?
Yeah, thank you for adjusting it, just for me.
That's fine. As we have a couple of roads, we need to take care of this. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. All right, Larry, you must have been sitting around here all day. Let's get these roads taken care of, okay? We have just got, we have, we have Hawksworth Estates, Dexter Drive and, um... Larry, Dexter, the police and fire are all set up. Yeah, they, they, they waited. Dexter Drive, okay, Dexter Drive meets all that Raleigh Highway Department requirements regarding sidewalk, paving, garden, dirt, drainage, block drainage, sign of light.
You disappeared out for a minute, man, I'm looking for you, you said you were in the snow pit somewhere.
And then the fire department has no issues with the Asbilly plans for Dexter Drive, you have any questions?
Yeah, so I...
I don't have any. Wait, see it? Those are two.
Hey, you guys, good yourself, sitting in the lounge? Go there.
Hey, Jim.
My name's...
You gotta meet him.
Oh, you're welcome.
How are you doing?
Good, see?
How you doing?
Hey, good.
Hey, Kirk. Say hello to your brother. I will, he's hanging in there, it's been a tough winter for him, I will.
Tell him, tell him, uh, water, you know, it's a nice...
Was it?
But they canceled it.
He's, he's, he's still involved to a point, especially with Noah. We have, uh, the small copies of the Asbillys in the file. Larry, you wanna do Wild pasture or Dexter, we'll, we'll do it in order, do you have any preference? So, basically, Kirk, explain the process, we're making recommendations in the Selectmen.
This is review of the Asbillys, rounded out the, uh, Asbillys to fire, water, um, Concom and all those other water cuts. And, um, and I've gotten, I've gotten response, let's see, in this case for, uh, I'm actually still waiting for comments for Dexter Drive, I haven't heard back from the, the water department and, um, police approvals, we've gotten approvals from technical review agent, Concom, the light department, the health department, fire and highway. So, the planning board, um, actually makes a recommendation to the, um, to the Board of Selectmen who will hold the public hearing for the street, or the street acceptance hearing. So, it's up to the planning board to ensure that the Asbillys, that what is actually out in the field conform to the approved plan.
Correct, and that's where we defer to the multiple visits and historical continuity from Larry, cause this thing's been going on for a few years now, correct? How many years?
Six.
Six? No, not yours, no.
No, how many years have they gone on?
The Hawksworth, the Hawksworth, we're talking about Dexter Drive.
I had hair. So, you didn't. So, you know it was quite a while.
I had brown hair. I've reviewed the, if you're wanting for me to talk... Yeah, I am, it's all yours, the floor is yours. Street acceptance plans and Asbilly plans for Dexter Drive, I've reviewed both and recommended that the Board accept those two plans and move it on to the Board of Selectmen. Wow, that saves some time.
Sounds good to me.
Comments?
As far as the water department, um...
Pending.
Who's, who's here for Dexter Drive? No one. Okay. Well, so...
This wasn't a public hearing, by the way.
I know, that's why, yeah.
All right, so we're just, make a motion?
So, I'm, we moved it, we accept the, uh, yeah, the Asbilly plan for Dexter Drive and recommend...
All right, Larry, it's hanging on, it's hanging on you, Larry, anyway, so... I just, we just made a deal on all that.
I'll make a motion, we accept the Asbilly plan for Dexter Drive.
Can I have a second, please?
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Bye.
It's unanimous?
And what about the street acceptance plan? With the motion being...
We're talking about Dexter Drive.
You're here for Dexter or you're here for Wild pasture?
No, for Wild pasture.
Oh, then we just did Dexter.
We're talking about Dexter Drive.
Sorry, we somehow mixed them up.
Okay.
We just said Hawksworth Estates.
Different property.
Hawksworth Estates.
Two, two on for the same issue today.
Because really, um...
What's the bad following?
They were, they were first on the agenda and also, it's less complicated of a project.
Yes.
Who seconded that?
I seconded it.
So, now we get to a more, a more complex one. All right, also, um, I don't have a copy of Brent's, um...
I actually just got them.
No, I have Brent's for Wild Pastures, but not for Dexter, there were no comments for Dexter?
No, because, uh, oh, I...
Are there any jurisdictionally, I don't know if there's any...
Uh, well, there were, but he, um, I, I got it right at the, and he, right before he left, it was the last thing he did.
Was I, did Brent, did he email me that?
Yeah, I think it was, it was really...
Well, anyways, that's up to them anyways, that's not gonna stop what we do, right? All right, I'm just concerned if there were, you didn't send any like major issues?
No, there was nothing.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Just get, get it to me?
I had them right.
No, Kirk, just get it to me tomorrow, cause I like to read it.
Okay, okay.
If there are any major issues, I certainly will bring them up in the public, I mean, but certificates of compliance and that kind of thing, any developer knows has to be wrapped up with the conservation. All right, so we have Asbillys also for Wild pasture states, um, and we have a letter from, uh, dated January 20, 2015, and, uh, dear board members, the purpose of this letter is to provide a written correspondence for delivery of the roadway Asbilly plans of the roadways for Wild Pastures Estates subdivision, which includes Oak ledge, Circle Road A, Wild pasture lane, Road B, and Arrowhead Circle Road C. Included are the Asbilly plans of six sheets, invert data for on-site drainage, was provided for the interim Asbilly drawings, which was submitted to H.L. Grand Associates, October 20, 2005. Mr. Cammet, professional engineer, CC to James, George Lottus and Lawrence Tilano. So, um, did you get a copy of Brent's thing?
Yes.
Okay, he emailed it to you? Cause that's, that's today as well, right?
Yeah. The only thing with Wild Pastures, you need to, there's, you need to file for a...
Certificate of Compliance, yeah.
Right, yeah, I guess it sounds like you are.
Why's it not?
And everything has really been done, uh, just, uh, there's a couple of, uh, signs for the trails.
Now, Larry, we also received from you dated January 30th, would you like to, uh, does that come forward from January 30th? Now we're on the...
A lot has come forward.
Now we're on the 18th of February, so...
We're talking about Wild pasture states.
Yep, yeah.
Uh, so, a lot has come forward since January, the first letter you read, I've been working back and forth with Bob Smith and Alarosco with Cammet.
Bob's, Bob's what, huh?
Offered that one and some other, some other communications on both the street acceptance plan and the Asbilly plans, I submitted a letter, uh, the original that I wrote at six o'clock tonight, uh, that I gave to Kirk, the original, that I am satisfied with both, after all of this back and forth with Cammet, satisfied with both the, uh, Asbilly plan as well as the street acceptance plan for Wild Pastures Estates and similar to Dexter Drive, recommend that the, there's two separate letters, there, there's one's Asbilly, one's street acceptance. Recommend that the Board, uh, accept these plans as complete for the record and moving on to the Board of Selectmen.
Do you still, um, think we should have a, a certificate of vote for the, the modifications, you know?
Field corrections.
Well, yeah, I think that's in process.
I was, I, yeah, I, I was wondering if, uh, if the Board is okay with it, if they can write it up as a letter that you can sign instead of doing it as a form...
You weren't, you suggested we should do it as a...
Well, you had...
Let the whole Board vote on and revise.
Yeah, you had one that you were taking care of and, uh, I suggested that all of those other things, you know, just do it as one complete modification.
Does he, but it's a field, I mean, since it's a field correction...
There were field changes.
Well, even the ones we've already...
I thought that that was a decision by the Board, you were gonna do that.
Yeah, like last meeting, last meeting.
But we're talking about the form of the decision, right? What, what the decision...
The format of the decision, I mean, in that, the Board can take a formal action, a vote, which I can record, but in terms of the decision, can I write it up as a, um, as a letter signed by the Chairman or...
I think so.
And, and record the vote in the letter so it doesn't have to really necessarily come back to the planning board?
Well, as long as we authorize it.
Yeah, but I would just write what you authorized.
Right. I mean, my suggestion to do that, uh, was primarily for the developer, so he had one memorialized, you know, letter or form from this Board that said he has, you know, all these things have been approved, whether they were field changes or whether they come through the Board.
Oh, without a doubt, cause that gets recorded in the whole thing. Right, that gets recorded in the package, so anybody buying sees it out of discrepancy. Right, so it clears any kind of, uh, issues going forward when you sell it. Now, that includes the other stuff that we approved before, I mean, the, uh, traffic changes?
Well, I, I don't have all that with me tonight, but I did, in some communication, you've got it in your files here.
I'm trying to think, but now...
I did, I did put it all in one document for you.
You're talking about the crosswalks and the, uh...
Yeah, there was, there was, the sidewalk that wasn't put in, there were crosswalks that were changed, there...
And then there was the curb cuts.
There were, you know, the dual curb cuts, the driveway curb cuts, I mean, you know...
But we can still send this, we can still send, we can still send this to Selectmen and vote on this next meeting when he gets this document completed.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
So, approve the Asbillys and then still vote on, and...
Yeah, yeah, cause it's for the purpose, you, you heard the purpose of which, Larry, it's, it's for the package, you know?
I, I don't think your approval of the Asbillys, um, has any impact on, you know, that you should have done this other thing first, for instance, no, I don't think so.
All right, so you're gonna have to communicate, I think it is better in one document than we vote on. All right?
Okay.
As we already had votes as we went along and we, Larry was trying to get approval to tell you what to put in your Asbillys.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? No, as we made changes and you, you brought things up, what was it like, the traffic mitigation, the speed mitigation signage and also what, some curbing and the driveways and, you know?
Yeah, well, the Asbilly plans are as they are today, which is, has been revised...
I know, right, right.
You know, as the, as the process is done.
Which leads Larry to this recommendation now. So, all of those comments you made in your June, uh, January 30th memorandum have been met.
Correct.
All right. You speak.
I'm very good.
Chuck Pranti, 45 Wild pasture, I'm the resident of the whole bunch. At this point in acceptance, the one thing that the residents have been noted, especially in the, like, wake of the snowstorm that now, but even before as a...
Snow?
Yeah, no, this whole snow thing, you see that? Is the width of the roads, um, it seems very narrow when the roads are clear and, and now at this point, literally, we are one lane roads right now, coming in and out, myself, I've had to back up twice in the school buses, cause they can't back up, so...
It's like Newbury Road.
My god, Newbury Road, same thing.
Except in Brown, Nipso, just one lane.
Yeah, this is, these are two wing, two...
You're talking, well, you, you can talk...
Oh, I don't know what the, I don't want to break the procedure, I'm just asking that.
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah, so I know we're at the point where getting ready for acceptance, we're getting ready to decide.
Then the town will be plowing it once it's accepted after town being.
I'm not even talking about when it's, right now.
Right now, it's the developer's responsibility to plow it.
It's not of the plowing, it's, I'm saying, the roads seem, roads are narrow.
Because the roads are too narrow?
Even when it's the middle of summer, the day of summer, if you have two cars coming at the same time, and there's some challenging points, especially at the entry points, it's very hard to maneuver around people. If you have two people trying to come in and out of development at the same time, it's very easy for people to close their eyes.
Those are the roads that are.
Roads are built according to the approved plan, and the approved plan went through this planning board, and there was a lot of discussion, John, about, you know, the road width and traffic calming and connecting with the other development and so forth. So that's, that's how this board, you know, several, many years ago, looked at the road widths, and they narrowed them down, you know, for those reasons, so.
Yeah, I get, I get, I get plans, guys, plans are great things, plans are wonderful because they're plans. But now you have people who bought properties who are no longer, you know, it's not Jim's development anymore, it's the residents' development now. We're living there as people, we're living the real experience, not what she put on paper. We can tell you it doesn't work, so we can tell you it's just not working for the residents. I mean, I had three residents this morning, Jim, talking this morning about this, I just got.
But don't use the snow thing as an example.
No, I'm saying, it snows, maybe it works, but if you don't clear some, there's some.
I'm sure it's been much worse, much worse.
Yeah, I mean, I've been there since 2000, 2009 I moved in, so I've been there since most of the build.
Every suburban town, people are backing up the one-way streets now that used to be two-way streets.
No, I'm not talking about the snow, I'm saying the dead of summer.
You're saying the roads are too narrow.
Most beautiful day of the year, right?
Is that true?
Now with the addition of the new curbing and things like that.
I mean, they're legal, well, so, I'm not passing the buck, but before my time.
He built them according to the approved plan.
I have no doubt it was built according to the approved plan, I'm not at all faulting the.
He put in an expensive grant of curbing, so, you know, widen those things is gonna cost a lot of money, I would think.
Just expressing the.
A wide?
They're, they're very, I think it's 22 and 20 and 18 or 16, do you guys remember? The one-way road is it 16 or 18?
They sound right, yeah.
And 20 and 22.
So the main drag is 22, right?
It's wider.
And some of those roads are one-way too, right?
The one is.
One is?
The circles, yeah.
But. You know, one thing, John, is probably, since you bought, was when the curb was added, that road got, you know, narrower. By perception, not by the pavement that was there, because that was cut back, and then the curb was put in, and the concrete was put in, and then the top went off. But it, by perception, it looks narrower, because it, you know, it closed that edge off.
So.
I think 22 is pretty, that's typical.
Are you at? I'm on the main drag, right?
The most, yeah, I mean, the most roads ever are like 24.
All I can say is, you know, we approved, we approved those widths, and at the time, there was a lot of controversy in town between various.
Having like runways.
Various neighborhoods about, you know, cars, this is terrible, this development is terrible. You remember this, right, Rick, this development is terrible, because people gotta be cutting through, and so we, the board looked at ways to, Larry says, to calm the traffic and discourage cut-throughs. So that's, that's what we came up with, along with the island and the.
I'm not questioning, I think Jim did a great job building the property, so I'm not questioning anything that wasn't approved.
Yeah, and I'm, well, I'm just explaining the rationale for those roads and.
So I can just look at, so I have, I do work in, in security world, I do risk things, I have video coverage of that, of the main drag and property. I can send you all day long, when you start seeing the cars that are coming next to each other clearly, clearly, I mean, I can.
Surveillance, man.
Are you saying cars can't pass?
They, well, in some cases, the cars can't pass, where you can't, especially when you first come in the development, there's this cut-around.
Crime.
You can't see around it, so car coming one way, car coming the other, you have to make a quick dash into the side. Now, for a while, it wasn't a problem, because we had an open lot there.
You come in from Weatherfield Street?
Yeah, so when we had the, last summer, we just had the last house built, one of the last houses built, so it was an open lot before end, so if you got into trouble, you could go into the lot, but now the lot's been built up, so there's no, there's no room to get around, and you can see it in a regular basis, that cars are kind of.
What, the entrance to Weatherfield and Wild?
And Wild pasture lane, that goes through, as well as the main drag, which I live on. You kind of see that, there are moments where people are stopping and saying, okay, you go, no, you go, kind of conversation, especially with school buses, that's definitely, and that's there, we all kind of, and that for all the right reasons, we shouldn't be moving around for school buses, as far as I'm concerned, but you can see.
Sounds like traffic calming has worked.
Well, I think you're opening yourself up for, for traffic, you know, accident in the future.
Road rage?
You're basically setting yourself up for failure with some, some of that conversation, because the perception is what a driver's gonna see, right? So the driver's driving the road, feels the road's narrow, whether it is not or is, they're gonna drive with the sense that it's narrow, because that's what they're seeing with their eyesight, that's what their instincts do.
Well, you know, in a way that.
You've been on Church Street in Boston, though, these streets that used to be two.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not Boston.
Some of these streets that used to be two ways, I mean, people make it work.
Man, man, before, you being the resident, what would you like to see done?
The, I'd like to look, see at least in the common areas, to see if we could expand out more, cut in more.
Who's the builder?
I am.
Yeah, what do you think?
I think I'm done.
Done?
I think I'm done, yeah.
All right, well, where do we go now?
In the common areas, or?
Well, the common, like, we have a common, it's a common center area.
Yeah, right.
That's, if anything, I could think that might be an opportunity for those common areas.
I bet parts of 22.
You're not gonna always block, you're not moving.
For my health, we're taking any sort of priority without, and you could, I'd take easily explain.
I definitely hug the board.
The roads out, she'll inches on the side.
Well, you know.
Some of that kind of perception. If you want, if you want the accidents, I.
All right, you know, frankly, the developer, you just heard his reaction, that's perfectly understandable.
And I don't, I would do the same in this position, to be honest with you, I'm just thinking, as we're getting ready to set this in town.
It's unlikely the town would, uh, be appropriate money to make that kind of change, you know, really, it seems unlikely to me, but you never know.
I never noticed it being.
It comes down to the first lawsuit, it comes down to the first accident, and I'll be the guy who's got the coverage, you can say, yeah.
Well, no, also, then you'll be the guy that's gonna do speed, and also people, that's why the speed limits are very low, and if people are going to the speed limits that are posted there.
Yeah, we haven't had that.
I would say this, the roadway design will actually prevent accidents rather than causes, I would say, that'd be my opinion. I'd like to see what you're talking about.
I'll show you, I'd be happy to, I mean, that's one of the benefits of being the guy who's right in the center of it, they can see the full coverage of it.
If you can predict how people drive in this state, then I'd write 128 every day.
So obviously, people parking on the street, right?
Speed limit's posted at 55.
And there's a sidewalk as well. At the space, sidewalk, this place from the curb.
Wow.
I know, I was impressed with that.
Pretty happy, pretty lucky people.
People may shy away from the curb, because they're afraid of getting the curb.
I, I'm just giving, I mean, it's just, this has been something that as a group, as a community, we kind of all, you know, common discussion that's been going on, is a regular conversation, saying, as things are tying up, it seems like it's kind of.
How long you been living there?
2009, I moved in, so I.
You're bringing it up now?
Well.
No. You started doing hearings on acceptance, what's your process there?
Whoa. Yeah, I think Larry's point is valid, that when they put the curbs in, it really reinforced.
And we talked, Larry and I spoke when the.
Put the curves up in Nipsoch, it seemed narrow.
Chat before, I mean, we had raised concerns prior to the curbs going in, that wasn't, I'm on record with her, before they went in.
No, you're right.
To answer your question very carefully, yes, I did it appropriately before, it was just the time by which you decided to review it.
It's true, though, when you don't, when you have full granite curbs, you don't really have the escape route necessary.
Yeah, it's just something.
I said I had to go in the snowbank, on Newbury Road, because it's so narrow, because.
I mean, I'm kind of one of the luckier ones, because I'm actually in the main, my personal affected area is the main area, so I have more room than I think some.
Some of those are one-way, though.
The curbs and things like that.
It's a short street, isn't it?
Ah, well, the main drag is fairly, is fairly long, I mean, you kind of have this.
I mean, how long is the whole project, it is, was it half mile, quarter mile, I don't know.
Come down and take a ride with me, I'll show you, I'll show you.
Well, one of these days, I've even been down there.
Yeah, you get a nice big ramp-up speed?
If people have to slow down, I'd say contraplacent, because I live on a small street, and they're doing 50 miles an hour down the street.
No, no, the idea that we're slowing down traffic, guys, we've got.
See, I got them cutting through Whipsoch to come over, so I don't know who they are, you people can knock on their doors, because you know who they are.
Oh, no, we got the, once the streets are done, we have a cut-through that's opening, so.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, so once the project's approved, there's a cut-through through the.
Oh, I know, I'm ethical, I haven't seen that one these days.
Spencer Knowles or, yeah.
So it opens up a cut-through. With our own little community, I mean, we can show you, I can actually show you through speed timings, my camera systems can do that, you know, we've got a nice little.
You have permission from your neighbors to film them all the time?
Don't need it, it's public domain.
All right, he's a CIA agent, he knows.
Let's go, sir, I'll take it.
Hernandez just found out.
No, it's true, I see them all over cities, I was just in Europe, they're all over Europe.
So, yes.
It's just a consideration, I mean.
But you don't normally see them all around.
They're getting more popular, our neighbor actually did a better job than I did with the new house.
I think we've been, you know, pretty open-minded about, you know, going through the whole driveway process and all that stuff, so. When they built the double driveways and all, because the neighbors wanted that, you know, and that wasn't really, so that was a modification that actually the neighbors wanted.
Which one?
The wider driveways.
Wider driveways.
Aye. Well, can we vote on the?
Yeah. I need to. All right, Larry, you can verbally, I don't need to read your letter, so.
So you don't want us to vote?
Oh, no, no, it's not that, it's just, just alleging that the water department hasn't given me anything.
Wild pasture?
Well, nothing's gonna be done from?
I don't see how you can, I mean, just the plan that was approved, it was built as, as approved, and, yeah, I don't think there's anything gonna be done, frankly.
Well, I don't want him leaving here being mad at us.
I won't be mad, listen, that's the.
He doesn't look like that kind of person.
That's radiation is beautiful for him, it's just you saw, a fryer, you saw the backside, you choose, you know, that's, that's the.
But I don't think as a board, we're terribly concerned about the liability coming from it either, because we, we applied the zoning bylaw to, you know, which is.
That's not the nature of this discussion.
Right, so I, I motion that we, subject to the approval from the water department, or, or, I should say the, yeah, the approval from the water department, that we approve the Asbilly plans and recommend to the board selectmen that they accept the street for a public way.
I just have a question, so that, the street acceptance plan will connect with Spencer Knowles or Arthur Gordon or whatever.
Yes, it does.
And it, and it's. Oh, good, so we actually have a, they'll actually be, they'll actually connect.
Right.
Unlike Cynthia Lane where we.
It should be opening up.
We don't actually meet up.
There's been Jersey barriers there since the finished product was, been worked on at Wild pasture, and once the street is accepted, I don't think after this meeting, but once the street is accepted, then they'll remove those barriers.
Yeah, sure. All right.
How much are you concerned, everything else is fine over there?
I think Jim did a great job, overall, I gotta give him. And I'm all for it as well, and, you know, I know we still have the letter I need to discuss, and my thing, I don't know, I think this encompasses that, I think it's the next topic in the agenda. Yeah, so.
So, second to the, to the motion on the table, I second.
Aye. So, would that motion encompass both the acceptance and the Asbilly?
Mm-hmm, right.
Yes. Okay. Now, we have the acceptance plan, is it appropriate to endorse that plan now?
No.
The, the, okay?
Well, we just, we made it subject to the water department's comment, so.
The only reason I said that, because it was subject, conditional to the.
Okay.
Water department.
So, should we leave the mylar with you then, and how do you want us to handle that? We have the mylar and not?
That's cool.
One second.
There is no water on the street, it's directly to the town administrator, I mean, I don't know how you should do.
We should sign those?
No, we don't, no, 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 you don't have to sign, I mean, I think that was your guidance, that, I mean, it's an option for the board, sign it, but you don't have to sign.
You have to sign the acceptance plan, because that's the plan that goes on record at the registry of deeds, because that's, the deed will make reference to the acceptance plan.
But it's the planning board, not the selectmen?
No, 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 it's a plan that has to be signed by, by.
End up.
The Bob Smith, Cameron Engineering, the street acceptance plan is endorsed by the planning board and by the board of selectmen. And then that, it goes on record at the registry of deeds.
And that just shows the way is not the utility.
Correct, there's nothing about water on that or anything, all it is, is the right of way.
Right. Because it shows the way.
Okay, so then.
It's like accepting a subject.
So the water department has no, nothing to add to that?
It's from the planning board approving.
Did you get the last mylar, Bob, do you have all the mylars tonight?
Yes, I do.
Um, just a, the, the, just to be clear here about if there's been any changes.
Sign them on.
Well, why'd you just leave the plans with us?
Leave them, we're gonna sign them on the next meeting. It's late.
Okay, that's fine, we'll leave the mylar here.
As chairman, I don't want to go.
Our objective is to make sure it gets to town meeting, so let's.
It's gonna be part of our business on the 11th.
Okay, that's fine.
We're going on two and a half hours.
There was only one other item for discussion, and we may have to put it off, and that is, we'd like you to consider a reduction in the tripartite agreement. The tripartite agreement was originally for 346,000, it's never been reduced, to the best of my knowledge. All the work has been done, that, under the tripartite agreement, of course, the bank has to hold that money out, so it's money that's not available to Jim. So we'd like you to consider reducing that, perhaps, and leave some amount in there, you know, like a retainage, probably like 10%.
Have you made a request?
Well, why don't you write us, write the planning board a formal letter requesting it, and then we can put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, I take that as a request.
Yeah.
How much you want, and you've gotta put your list, what you.
We'll send in a letter and I assume.
Original form, so the planning board members can see, and Kirk can coordinate that, you know, what's been done, as you know, the list has been completed. And you've certified, then he was engineer can.
And Larry can.
Yeah, you haven't submitted anything yet, right? Because I haven't seen any.
No, no.
If you do it formally, we'll just take the, it's a quick thing.
Yeah, we'll submit a letter.
All right. Believe me, we get those all the time, so.
That's fine.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Whatever amount you deem, we will hold some back. You might want to ask Kirk.
Nice job on the subdivision, by the way.
Thank you.
I know it was, probably, it was very difficult at times for you to.
Well, yeah, yeah, a little sloppy here for a few years, but we're happy with it.
Isn't it interesting how things, when they pick up, they really pick up?
Yeah, yeah, it was good, you know, we just, yeah, hold the weight.
When I look to the country club, I'm looking at village green, the paper, you know, the selling zone.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And that started very slowly, you know?
Yeah, a couple of years, the phone never rang. But that's all right, you know, it's all good, we're happy with it.
You have a nice community.
I'm happy with it, I'm still living there.
People in this board, when you look at the aggregate, have lived in this town a long time now. Except Chris is friendly.
Eleven years now, so.
Eleven already now. My first move here, after 30 years, they said you're still new, you know?
You're gonna leave the mylar.
I am gonna go up.
Thanks, do you see her for another one?
Yes, I got the last one, last one at least, I guess.
Can I read the address?
I know, it's fifth time, that's when I get my second one.
I talked to you on the phone.
Hey, can you have the? What do you mean?
That's the important thing, those are.
Thanks for coming. Actually, it feels good to get some of these streets.
You have the double driveway?
I'm the double driveway, I'm that lucky guy. I got the flood, I got the great flood, too.
Oh, really?
Oh, I got that on video, too. Sent that in the current, I've got the bucket record.
The great flood, well.
So my, in Wild pasture, my business, I have the drainage, the two roads that I'm back and forth, and, uh, somewhere, they're working on it, they do.
G2, we even did, got it pre-done.
They ran a drain storm, and it's gotten to the point where cars, they literally.
All right, let's, here. All right, let's get this one out, let's go. All right, what's, this is a memorandum of agreement?
Yeah, this has to do with this memorandum of agreement, um, between. Yeah, it's the same one.
You're supposed to sign this, right?
Well, here's the thing, when we, when we had this great discussion when the curbing went in, I said I was open to reviewing opportunities, I, I clearly was very careful in my wording, as you can imagine, what I heard this week tonight, and very careful in how I look at these things, and I'd be open to a conversation about, um, signing something to make sure that we can maintain our, our little driveway. Felt forward a couple of months later, and worked with Kirk, talked with Kirk, team Larry, both great guys, by the way, really good experiences, got this letter that showed up kind of out of the blue, saying, okay, just sign this, John, and I said, well, wait a second, I haven't, I said I would be open to something, I didn't say I would sign anything, I didn't say I would be ready to sign anything at any time, but then I, I'm open still. The letter that was sent to me was very ambiguous, it was very broad spectrum, it really wouldn't hold up in a, in a litigation situation, if you had a situation or problem, we had to fight on either side, so, still open to going somewhere, but I'd like there to be some more, um, defined nature, and that's the letter I sent to Kirk in response to the letter.
Did you draft something? Did you help out?
I did, I said, I said, uh, I said in the message to Kirk, we're concerned about the wording, a small amount is too broad, no interpretation.
Yeah, this is an email that he sent.
How about, how about if?
Why don't you draft one?
Well, I didn't.
How about if?
I did, I drafted up the language, like that would be more appropriate.
How about if the two of you, uh, look at this and try to?
I guess, that's fine.
Okay, Kirk, yeah, Kirk, I get your point.
I don't know the process.
Look, I have a lot of experience for litigation as well, so.
I don't want it, that's the whole point, I wanna avoid it.
No, but that wasn't their point, this is not necessarily, this is a memorandum of, of.
It's a legal document, it becomes, it becomes, it would become precedent.
No, you're right, you gotta be comfortable with the language, so.
We have, we have two lawyers on the board, too.
Great.
Well, I did want to, like, um, his comment about the, um, uh, the small amount of ponding, I think, and this may, Larry may wanna comment on this as well, what, if there would be some suggestion of other language that might, that we might be able to agree on something, because you're, you're saying that's like too.
So if I get to something that causes material damage to my property, that, and that's legal terminology around this, right, material damage, that's the only way I'd be able to go and take any litigation, I wanna be able to say, hey, it's like this summer, we had the great flood, that, we've gotta send the video in to Kirk and show Larry where my driveway was completely underwater, which has led to cracking.
Remember there was silt, there was silt.
Whatever the case was.
The catch basin was still in construction there.
That's great, my, my driveway was still underwater.
I'm just saying, that's why, that's why a catch basin is not functioning.
But I, we've had times before, when we've had, like, snow, and we had snows in the last couple of years.
Again, the catch basin is still at silt, siltation device.
That wasn't, that was just this summer, we've got other times, since that's finished since oh nine, I can tell you that we're the main drainage point.
All right, so what, yeah, so what?
Okay, I'm gonna pull a Roberts rule on you, point of inquiry, you gotta let me speak, proceed, parliamentary procedure, so you're gonna speak.
At ten fifteen, though.
You chose to have a public meeting and put me on the agenda last, I'm sorry. I waited patiently. I waited my time.
That's correct.
So, we have had, my, the area in front of my driveway is the primary drainage of two roads that come down, right, so, as we've had in previous years, when the melting starts, or big rainstorm starts, when the sills are working, when the drainage is working, we get, forget before we've had even the new roads in, before we've had huge ponding issues and water issues, and when I talk to Jim about it, Jim's view was, don't worry about it, when the final road goes in, and the curbing goes in, that's gonna make it all better, and that's gonna solve it, and, and I hope it does, I really do. It hadn't, the first three, four storms that we had after the curbing went in, it actually was worse, in, even after they fixed the, the ceiling, so now, I'm kinda saying to myself, well, wait a second, we got this big massive lizard that's just popping through and having fun, and we're gonna have a lot of melting coming up, I'm not really prepared to sign off on anything, guys, until I've had a cycle of, of a season, at least through a meltage, to see how much ponding and how much, uh, water buildup we're gonna have.
That makes sense.
If we're gonna have a big swimming pool, that's gonna be a problem for me, it's just not a good thing.
I think that guy, Jim, should have been in with this.
He knows this, I've got emails to him, I've got conversations about it, his view is that you guys approved the plan, you built the plan, you approved.
So, so what are you saying, you don't wanna sign this for another year, or?
I'm not saying a year, I'm thinking by, by spring, after we get the melt, I'll probably have a, I'll understand.
Okay, so why don't we just continue this discussion?
Just one thing about what, it wasn't built according to plan, that your driveway was, was double wide, where a, a single wide was originally.
Oh, yeah.
Part of the problem was because though you have the, maybe Larry would explain a little bit better from engineering terms, but because it was a double wide driveway, you had these drain outlets that are actually in the drive, or at the foot of the driveway.
Yeah, that's, I think that's.
Would it make a difference if it was a single driveway? Would it, would it alleviate the, the problem?
If you, if you look at the way the water build has been over the time, the water will cross the whole, whole driveway, so I still think I would be affected.
Okay.
Even if you had this, this build.
There's two things, there's two things that happen there, I think John is the second owner of that house.
Yeah, I'm the second owner, by the way, so.
And, and the house was built low, and, and the garage steps down out of his house, so the garage is lower than his house, the garage has not a great deal of pitch to the road, curb line, that's one thing, that's the negative there, the other is that, as Kirk said, uh, there's a double catch basin in there, which would have been in the curb line, it, the catch basin would have been here, and the opening for a single wide driveway would have come in.
End of the driveway.
But now it's a double wide driveway, so it catches, the catch basins are in, in the curb cut, pretty much right in the center, slightly favoring the north side a little bit, so, so there's the two things that are going on, uh, if the house had been built up a bit, the garage had more pitch out to the curb line, that would have resolved the issue that we're talking about, whether the, whether the driveway's a double wide or a single wide, but it's exacerbated now because it's a double wide, and the water comes in and ponds around that catch basin, into John's driveway, as well as out onto the street.
Are you saying that in certain events, if the catch basin can't handle the flow, is what you're saying?
I, I would doubt that, I haven't seen it, but, I mean, John lives there, I know the, the one time was because of filter.
We, we realize that, I'm happy we found some.
I'm just saying, I'm very familiar, I mean, after seven years.
But that's why it's a double.
We've had, I'm just saying, seven years in the conservation commission with deals with drainage all over this town, and being chair, and seeing this town build up, and Cliff as well, and Eve, I've seen every kind of flooding in this town, including in my own property, um, in all sorts of situations, and I know it can occur, um, sometimes they can occur because things are not quite, not quite perfectly built, other times they occur because of like, you know, like you said, a house that, maybe the pitch, like, people don't want, I gave Saunders Lane, for example, I won't admit, you know, it came off the street and went down, their sellers down below.
Yeah.
And they had to put a catch basin in there, in their, um.
Driveway.
Driveway.
Yeah.
And it was horrible, but it was entirely the builder's fault, you know, it was just like, not foreseeing that water goes downhill in the, in the, in the garage in certain events, because certain, and they have a wetland behind, his thought was that it would just go into the wetlands, but when the wetlands fill up, what's it do?
Yeah, I guess, believe me.
Wetlands, so.
I'm not, I, I'm not.
But if there is some elevation, I mean, drainage calcs are usually carefully dealt with by engineers, um, however, if you have ponding at the end of your driveway, and a driveway that should be behind it, a catch basin that should be behind the curb cut, then maybe that's where it should be, and then some of the ponding will take place behind that, what is it, six inches granite?
Six inches.
Then you, at least you got six inches of water that is gonna not be on your driveway.
I, I'm not saying, I think that Larry did a great job, and the team did a great job with the resolution that we're at, I'm, I'm fairly satisfied that we did the right thing, and we're in the right space, and, and all this kind of stuff, and, um, open to the idea, so fair is fair, and we should have some sort of arrangement, but I'd like there to be some detail, that some less interpretation, more a detailed understanding of what would trigger a situation where I would look for remediation from the town versus where I'd be responsible for.
Well, I actually, yeah, I have the belief that, uh, we've, we've.
Remediation from the town.
We modified, we modified the, uh, the subdivision plan to allow the double current cut, we accepted the roadway as is, I, I don't see the purpose of this agreement at all, because we don't delineate what you can sue us for and what you can't sue us for by.
We do right of ways, we don't do individual homes.
Right, so I mean, I, I think, the town's not gonna, and we can't agree for the town to remediation in any event.
All I'm saying is, I had the letter to sign off on, and that was.
Because you asked for a change.
Yeah, this letter was actually in response to the.
Your request.
It was at, it was at your request to, to keep the double driveway, but you worked out.
Requested a double driveway.
We, you actually worked out an agreement with a, a technical agent who suggested the memorandum of agreement, and, and I understand.
I said I'd be open to a conversation.
If you don't wanna sign the letter, that's fine, I don't, I don't know that we even need it, really.
I think the, the, town council wouldn't be thrilled to know that we're.
Town council recommended against the.
Remediation.
Remediation, you know, any area, this is, we're, we're liable if we did this, and we're not liable if we did that. Threw it either, no, I mean, I think, I think the reason we, it even came out in the first instance is that there was a request that we consider, uh, modifying the acceptance plan to allow the double driveway as built, uh, and we were thinking, okay, well, if we do that, what if there's a negative consequence to it, and we thought, well, maybe we can find a way that they would indemnify us against, uh.
I, I understand what you guys are trying to do, and so I'm trying.
Well, in this particular case, since, actually, you brought to our attention, I mean, to me, but, you brought to our attention there are drainage issues at the, at the foot of your driveway, and to a professional engineer, that being the case, but at the same time, you prefer having that kind of space, however, if you're saying remediation in certain events, then we probably should tell the developer to go and go back and I, I.
I'm, I'm suggesting that.
You can't have it both ways.
I'm suggesting you presented a letter to me that was essentially indemnifying the town if I have a material issue.
And that's your opinion, then, because?
No, that, that's what would show up in a court, I'm, who are the lawyers? Are you, are you the lawyer? Because I can tell.
Are you a lawyer?
I sit with a lot of lawyers, I do a lot of court work, I'm an expert witness, working on contract work.
Again, what, I don't, I'm missing, it's almost ten thirty at night, I'm missing the point, what do you want us to do? What do you want us to do?
You asked me to come.
Your town, well, what would you like us to do?
I'm, I'm happy just to forego the letter, and if something.
I'm happy to forego the letter.
Yeah, I think that's what we ought to do.
I think that solves the problem.
We're open, yeah, we're good. We're totally open.
All right, then, then thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. That solves that problem.
We're not gonna shove anything, yeah, we're just, yeah.
Yeah, and just to your point about, the town council actually recommended against doing the memorandum of agreement, like you.
Okay, right.
And we brought this up before.
Hey, you know what, I think I could, might've come around full circle on it, but at one point, I thought it was a reasonable thing, but now, it's further discussed, I'm thinking it's probably unnecessary, and creates more problems than it solves.
And if you remember, at the recent, the previous meeting, was where we did the minor modification, that was the actual recommendation of the town council.
Right, right.
To do the minor modification, but she had recommended against doing the memorandum of agreement.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd be reluctant to sign this too, I understand, but, you know, we just don't need this.
I didn't even know about it until I got it, and Kirk's like, can you sign off? I'm like, okay, that's interesting, so, it was not, that, like, there was an ongoing conversation about the letter, it was just something.
He's gonna carry out the agenda.
No, 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 I mean, you must have understood, because this was based on discussions.
You gotta, I said to Larry in our conversation, in fact, I'm open to reviewing options, and that was one of the options, and I'm still open to always reviewing options, doesn't mean I'm gonna sign off.
We were all good until you started videotaping.
No, no, that, that's just, that's just to show you, I mean, I'll tell you, the one we worry about the speed boy is actually Jimmy's daughter, she, he's the worst, she's the worst culprit of the speed, of the under road, talking, so, he's going fifty miles per hour down the road.
I don't mind, that's fine.
No, I got, I, I wrote the letter, um.
I appreciate your patience waiting.
Oh, no, actually, I know, I did, I look at a lot, I might come here just to listen to more of them.
I wrote it up for thirty years.
It's our job to participate, as you said earlier, we don't come to.
I, I like.
It's not good.
It's the most people I've, I think, have been at a meeting.
It's our, good things, I say, my thing to have, is the next round of conversations, at least have the conversation.
Nice seeing you, always a pleasure.
Hey, it's good to talk to you. I gotta go deal with the water guys.
I remember you one day, I was there.
Were you there with the water guys?
I told you.
When I was leaving, when I was leaving, I told the. I still love you, why would you? You guys are so much better.
I should put together with my wife, she, she, uh, pulls apart the water department's numbers and sends it back, spreadsheets.
That's kind of what I was starting to do too, like, your, your model doesn't make sense, the way you did your financial model.
Put it this way, you'll be surprised, this year, you're gonna see a lot of flooding, if we get every rain.
I have no doubt, guys, look, I had seven thousand gallons of water in my basement up there. Yeah, the flexible pipe that you guys allowed, that didn't work so well, you guys.
Well, I could have made copies.
We gotta take, look.
Not you, but the town. That was fun, that was wonderful.
Are we, uh? We're gonna down your way, one of them.
Oh, come on down, come on in, I'll break out some, some cobbie, some macho, or chat.
Are we gonna do the annual report there?
You make your own?
I might, oh, no, we.
Thank you, gentlemen, have a good life, thank you.
And, uh, what about the, um, I guess, I put, uh, meeting house, village and city house lane on, um, on the agenda, just, uh, but, uh, Said couldn't actually be here tonight, but I do want to point out that the, that, um, that tripartite agreement will be coming, the date is coming up at the end of this month, and, uh, so the town is gonna have an opportunity to either call in the money or to, uh, extend.
Has he done anything?
No, I've actually, he's gonna come in on March eleventh, couldn't do it.
He doesn't know what he's supposed to do, right? He doesn't know what he's.
Yeah, we haven't made any.
No, he knows what he's supposed to do, but I think he's, because of, uh, his, the whole.
Here you go, Larry.
Uh, issues with the DEP, uh, that the project, the project is pretty much stalled, I don't think he's made any progress, I talked to him on the phone today, and he's gonna be, just to give you a heads up, he's gonna be trying to cover it around, and we're already, however, trying to say, well, the town will just need to accept.
No way.
Well, wasn't there some conservation issues that he had?
Yeah, that's still, that's still.
Before it even comes to us, though.
But because of this whole, um, because of the, uh, the issues of the, um, the superseding order and condition that's being appealed with DEP, that process has been stalled.
Please, please just keep working with Brett on that, and get as much information as you can before the next.
I don't even know what that is.
So, it's right at the, you know where we're talking about?
Or. I mean, the pay.
The last I saw, that was actually two thousand nine, and nothing's, I'm not sure. Stalled, or is it? Has it been dismissed, or? To me, I don't believe that, I mean, I think that that order of condition applies, and as much as he's unsatisfied with it, uh.
He hasn't been saying the same thing.
He hasn't preserved his rights to bring the appeal.
I mean, last time he was here, he was, he wanted to know what he was supposed to do, and he was told that he.
We're not in that role, um, to speak for the DEP, speak for the conservation commission, speak for the conditions that are in his initial order of conditions, the extensions, the supersedings, that's really not our role, what we are in, to see whether or not the street gets built according to what the people who, uh, his agreement with his budding properties, and the people who bought there, and for him to finish that, and that's why we're holding the money, and that's, so if he chooses to, um, do that.
If we, uh.
And there's system drainage issues there as well, but, but we can't do anything about the litigation, so.
Right, and yet, if we continue, if we extend the triparti agreement another year, aren't we just putting off, and that'll be having to do something about?
Well, that's, I think that's what, like, like Kirk, we'll talk to Debbie and stuff and see what, the town, we're not gonna ad hoc or need your, get the town in a situation to finish another road, so.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a process, we have to deliberate that carefully, I think, before we get into that again, the point is, though, it may come down to that, and that's why, um.
So it's a large bond?
Exactly.
What is, was it about two and a quarter?
I think you might all, might wanna bring, uh, and you could learn and get up to speed with the process again through Debbie, you know, bidding, and Larry knows it, and maybe see what the highway department says as well.
Okay, okay.
You know, see what he says.
Okay, do we need to, uh, like, um, draft a letter to the bank to let them know what the board's intent, or?
Has he made a request to? Get it reduced?
No, no, I've got to reduce it, or.
Extended?
Not, well, to extend it.
When does it expire?
Uh, the twenty seventh.
Who's requesting?
It's not an, it's not an expiration, it's just that that.
Well, just say, that's right on.
But we probably should inform the, uh, Said and the, the bank holding.
I wouldn't say what our intention is, just, just, you can inform, no, I think it's up to him, isn't it?
I think it is, but I'm not, I'm not.
Should we, I mean, what are we doing?
We tend to move on. That would be on that.
I don't wanna take a formal vote saying what our intentions are, we don't have all our information, but at the same time, we can't say here, as a group, without say, oh, we wouldn't vote for it, or we don't even have a request, what are we voting on?
What's the expiration date on the?
We're voting on a phone conversation that you had with Said, that's not.
For some reason, it's not really a hard.
Well, I mean, the board can take action to extend.
No, but taking action means we would vote to authorize you to send a letter to a bank?
Yeah.
And what would you say to the bank? All you can say to the bank, the board has received no information from the proponent or the owner of the tripartite, to either extend it or get it reduced, or to take action.
That's no good.
I mean, how do you get some more money from the time you said?
He wrote us a check.
I mean, I, you, you're, you're saying that you need a formal written letter requesting.
I don't take action on things like that unless the, someone gets on the agenda.
Could we ask town council what to do, I mean, here we go to, something, something that may expire in a few days, um, could you explain the situation to her and say, is it really necessary for us to do anything, or can we just sit back and wait for, for the developer to come?
That's not, with a triparti agreement again, because, I mean, when it expires, what actually happens at the expiration? The money certainly doesn't get released to us, and yet, we don't wanna likewise see it.
I've heard, I've heard, actually, from the guy who was sitting there, Ted Ragnati, that they, that there's a continuing obligation, and the town, the bank has to hold the.